I would like to call the August.
Is everybody muted?
Sorry, I think that's me. Sorry, we're having some feedback.
Good.
Thank you. Hello and good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the August 16th meeting of the Carver School Committee to order. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So just as a reminder, this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Members of the public can access the meeting online through Zoom. Obviously, we're also in person, so you can access the meeting in person. We're also live on Area 58. So there's multiple ways for the community to access and participate in today's meeting. When we get to the comments from the general public, I believe our intention is to take comments from those people in the audience first who are in attendance. Then we'll take comments from the general public from those participants in Zoom. When we get to that point in the meeting, I just need to put your name into the chat if you'd like to participate in public comment via Zoom. So just so everybody hears that instruction again. We'll do public comment in the room first, then we'll do it via Zoom. Those people interested in doing it via Zoom, we will do it. You just need to put your name into the chat. And you could even start doing that now to make sure the chair, you're there.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott. First, we have comments from the EAPC.
Good evening, everyone.
It's Al, how's it going?
I hope you've all been able to enjoy some time with your family this summer. I know I have been. I'll be brief because we do have a couple of people who've got to speak remotely. I know we're here. We're about to start another school year. And I just want to let everybody know, like last year, the EAPC is here to work with the district to provide a health and safety school environment for both our staff and students. So I'll turn it over to our people. Stacy, I believe, will go first.
Just give me a second to get Stacy up.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Everyone, can you?
Stacy, just hold on for one second. I'm sorry, I just need to. If I make your call, then you'll be able to turn your video on. I just need a second to do that. And I'll do the same for Jackie. All right, so Stacy, you should be all set now. You should be able to turn your video on. Now you're muted, Stacy.
Okay, hi.
There you go.
There it is.
Okay. So I thank you for letting me speak today. I'm Stacy Waitner. I am a member of the faculty over at CMHS. And I worked on the Health and Safety Committee last year, battling and dealing with all the preparations we had for COVID last year. And I felt it was really important that we came to speak today. And the EAPC wanted to make sure that we voice some of our concerns coming back into this school year. We were really hoping that we would be out of the pandemic by this coming school year.
Stacy, we lost your volume.
Back to normal, I do hope.
Stacy, we lost you after we hope this school year will be back to normal.
We have to turn the video off.
Maybe try turning your video off.
We're still having difficulty hearing you.
Maybe I can go after Jackie.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, Jackie.
You can hear me.
Yes.
I can hear Stacy too.
It may be that we're having problems in the room hearing the Zoom feed. It might be a lot of. So I don't know how many people's devices are hitting the access point. So it might be helpful in the audience if you have a cell phone or if you could maybe turn off your Wi-Fi connection because it's a guest access and your phone may be picking it up naturally. And that might be, that might be shortening our signal a little bit.
Yep. Might not be connected. Some lines off now.
And I will, I will do the same. I'll turn my phone off.
I will connect as a hotspot.
See if that helps.
Our apologies for the technical difficulties. Please bear with us.
We can see you live, Stacy, where you were like in and out before.
All right, why don't we try? Why don't we try again, Stacy, let's see how it goes. No, we still can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
But basically, Stacy, you're going in and out. So you can just try and see how we do. And otherwise, we'll, we'll go over to Jackie.
Okay.
Stacy, try turning off your video.
Okay. Um, so, oh.
It's just us. People are saying that they can hear them. Unfortunately.
Turn it off, you. Yes, I'm pretty. Oh, can't. Um, I mean, really comes to an hour major comes in. And do we didn't know what the tactics we could mitigate spread. And here's after. Oh, how the end droplets in the air. We are mistakes with a new threat. They're evident out there. That's affecting poor people and scruple ever would have expected.
Um, Stacy.
Yeah, so Stacy, you're just. Stacy, we're getting about every third word. So I think we're just gonna have to turn to Jackie and see if we can hear Jackie. Sorry, I'm sorry to say that, Stacy.
Okay. That's okay.
Okay, can, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. And thank you for letting me speak. Stacy was just basically going over numbers and the fact that this particular strain of the coronavirus is a different one than we dealt with last year. It is as transmissible as the chicken pox. There are 250-plus people, kids, that is, in our nation every day being admitted to hospitals for it. In the under vaccinated gins.
Unfortunately, Jackie, we're not able to hear you.
Jackie, you started strong and then you faded out on us.
I'm like back.
You're back again, but we can give a second.
So he. I think. We, the, um, that was Scott, the, come on, come back. Can't hear me. Until that time break, right? I had some rep, I did stop looking. And as most of you know, on the school committee, yeah, connecting for 18 months along with you. On August 3rd, when we discussed it, I thought, okay, it is going to be so clear that mask mandate is the only really safe and healthy option, at least to start with for the school year, that we won't really have to think about this. But it's become very clear that we do. And if there's a possible vote on that tonight, the EAPC wants you to know that mask mandates in this scenario is a working condition. And so Stephanie, I think you may have received an email to bargain with us. We need to talk about how this is going to unfold. And I know that there are a lot of people in Carver who are thinking it should be optional, like it was over the summer, and that it should be choice. But when you make that choice, you're taking away the choice for teachers who might be immune or who might. Who, you know, cost. And so transmis. It's the true. Where patient. Barrier. Thank. And the reason I think you study, are we good?
You, we got about 80% of it, Jackie. But we got, we got the key points there.
Okay.
We got the key points.
We shared, we're open and transparent. We shared our survey with you. And we surveyed the faculty of almost 200, 104 or 110 responded to that survey. So I don't know, Scott, if you have the.
Yeah, it, that data is in my presentation. That data is in my presentation site. So I'll share that with the committee during my presentation.
Okay, so there's, there's a really key amount of people here, 22%, who are unsure. And this is how it comes down for me. I have a stepson, Ray Tolliver, who went through Carver Schools. He graduated in 2000. And his girlfriend, hopefully bright to be, is an ER nurse who was vaccinated eight months ago, double vaccination, Moderna. On the 6th of August, she came down with COVID symptoms and she's been laid out since. She's 30 years old and the picture of health. I call this girl Captain Marvel because she's just unbelievably impressive. And it has laid her out. So you can be vaccinated and get this new virus and get quite sick. And so there are gonna be people in our school who are really subject. And so the prudent thing to do would be to ask. Don't feel that further. And server, 47% for a mask.
So Jackie, you cut out a little bit on. You cut out when you got to the 47%. But as I said, that, I have that data in my presentation. The school committee is gonna see that data tonight. They'll see the results of the staff survey. So we're just, so we're not sure what's going on on our end. Obviously, we're having some technical difficulties in the room. Because everyone is telling us that they can hear the presenters at home via Zoom. But obviously, in the room, we cannot hear them. So I think at this point, Jackie, I think, I think we've gotten the key messages that you were trying to portray. And I think if it's, Stephanie, I defer to obviously to the chair. If we need to move on and go on to public comment.
Thank you, Jackie. Sorry and to you and to Stacy that we're having technical difficulties in the room. We understand, like Mr. Neef said, people at home can hear, but we are unable to. But thank you for taking the time to present to us.
And just so for those other people looking to participate at home, we're actually, and we're in communication as we speak with our tech team, trying to figure out what our issues are in the room. So maybe it makes sense at this point to go to public comment in the room, Stephanie.
Yes.
Thank you.
I got a point of order, Ms. Chair. Can I suggest as a committee, we, anybody that's presenting to us through Zoom, via Zoom, maybe type out what their comments and email them to us first so that we, that way we have a record of them if they can't connect with us live.
Absolutely, we can certainly.
Because that way we would have had their comments anyway.
Absolutely.
Of course, it's not, not a Carver School Committee meeting in the last two years without technical problems, unfortunately.
Right, so if there is anyone that is tuned in on Zoom that would like to ask a question during public comment, if we are unable to resolve our technology issues for you to be able to type your question, you're more than welcome to email Mr. Neef and the rest of the committee with your question.
Well, comment.
Right, I'm sorry, yeah, or your, your public comment.
It'd be a long thing.
It would be, there's already a lot in the chat. So I would fear that some things might get missed if it's in the chat. So I think emailing your, your public comment, if you want to, at this moment, may be the best option. But we are going to hear public comments in the room. And we do have a large audience. So hopefully between now and the end of that, we'll be able to have people at home make their public comments via Zoom. So with that being said, if there is anyone that would like to come forward, and there's a table right there, a microphone, I just ask that you please state your name and your residence. And just so everyone is aware, we do have a three-minute limit that we like to speak, we like to keep to in terms of having people speak. And if everyone could just please try to remain respectful. I understand that this is a very sensitive topic or a topic that can be upsetting for some people. And very, I understand people are very passionate about it. And I thank everyone for coming. But if I could just please ask everyone to just please be respectful and mindful, let the person that's speaking have their three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Caitlin McCarthy. I am a former resident of Carver. My children still attend Carver School by choice. I'm gonna throw two numbers at you real quick, 72,000 and 94,000. On 8/10, 94,000 positive children in the state of, in the states are positive with the Delta variant of the COVID virus. Days prior, 72,000 children were positive. I have two children in the elementary school. I also have two children in the high school. And I have one child at the Gateway Program at Mass SOYET. I am here tonight to speak on your behalf to mandate the mask. I know many people are gonna agree with me on this, but I'm going to speak to you as a parent with an immune compromised child that has to attend the school this year. My daughter is entering first grade. She's very excited and I get we're taking remote away and I respect that. However, my daughter has 32 seizures, absentee seizures a day. My daughter has cardiac problems. My daughter has microchondromiopathy. And in short years, she won't walk. I've watched my daughter struggle just this last, just just last week. My daughter came close to hospitalization because she contracted pneumonia with bacterial tonsillitis. She had fevers of 102 to 103. Her oxygen levels dipped down to 79. I have to monitor that nightly. My daughter's on machines every night. I don't choose to have a medically compromised daughter, but I do. I get that we are going to have elementary children wear masks. But my high schoolers, if it's optional, could be made fun of and tormented, leading back to the bullying issue that I came to the same committee and addressed. I have to mandate my children to wear masks because I need to protect that child. Her last grand mal seizure, she stopped breathing for one minute. I almost lost my daughter. She's six. My high schoolers are vaccinated. I am fully vaccinated. And I come from a family that is first responders and they're all vaccinated as well. My son is vaccinated and he also got COVID. I almost lost him because he has asthma. It was in ICU for seven days. He stopped breathing at one point and I couldn't be there to be with my son. COVID is very real. It is not a government gimmick. I have two parents that work in the emergency rooms, one in Boston and one here in Brockton. My mother just suffered cardiac problems because she contracted Delta just recently. My mother is still in ICU. My mom is only 61. I know that a lot of people say that the effects of it is detrimental socially and so on and so on. And I get that and I respect the parents. Everybody makes decisions for their own children. I'm asking to make it because some people don't understand the effects that a high school or bringing it down to an elementary school is going to make in somebody's life. It could be life or death. And in my case, it is life or death. I have done some research on all of this because I, again, voiced my opinion on Facebook because it was asked. I was private messaged some pretty nasty things by fellow parents in this house, in this town, that I am socially helping, not helping my children, that the risk of it. I also looked at the lung association that says no mask are not causing you oxygen problems. It is a proven fact. The American Lung Association put a huge article in regards to this on the internet. I don't agree that we should have to wear them forever, but I think we need to give it some more time. The Delta variant is very new and it is very contagious, like they said, just like the chicken pox. You, even six feet apart, you can still get the Delta variant. The summer is just a trial period for all of us at this point.
That is, that is three minutes, actually two seconds over. But thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
My name is Jerry DiCosta. I live at 71 West Street. Thank you for letting me address this meeting. I've been a Carver resident for most of my 74 years and I grew up here. I attended the Governor John Carver School. I graduated from Plymouth Carver High School. My children and grandchildren all attended the Carver Schools. I guess you could call me a townie. I'm addressing the board tonight, not as a current parent of a school-aged child, but as someone who has been around and watched the gradual change in society to where we are now. And I have to tell you, I'm deeply afraid for future generations. Out of all the vaccines I've had in my life, tetanus, smallpox, measles, polio, meningitis, all FDA-approved, I have never been seen so much wishy-washiness over a vaccine that says I have to wear a mask and socially distance even when fully vaccinated, that I could still contract and spread the virus even when fully vaccinated. I've never been bribed by establishments to take a vaccine in order to win a car or cash. I was never judged if I didn't take it. I was never discriminated for travel or other regular services. The vaccines I listed above never told me I was a bad person for not taking it or taking it for that matter. I've never seen a vaccine that threatened the relationship between a family member and or close friend. Never have I seen it used for political gain. I've never seen it used to persuade kids in favor of free ice cream. I've never seen a worry about being told that something is okay to do one day and then told the next day it's not. And then on and off and on and off. I've never seen a vaccine where, and wearing or not wearing a mask, threaten someone's livelihood, jog or school. I've never seen a vaccine that allows 12-year-olds consent supersede his or her parents. That one blows me away. The sign in front of the elementary school says, have a great summer. And I'm sure most of the school-aged children here in town did just that. Birthday party, sleepover, summer camp. Some outings probably in the same buildings you are now considering masking. And yet the data shows that this age group has a 99.95% recovery rate. This is one powerful vaccine. It does all these things that I mentioned and yet it still doesn't do what the other vaccines do. And successfully achieved, I might add. And that's to fight off COVID. Please, members of the school committee, use a little common sense and let these children go back to school untethered by overreaching state mandates. And let these parents decide for themselves what is best for their children. Finally, let me close with a quote that's been attributed to several people. "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and getting the same result, but expecting a different outcome." Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak next that's in the room?
My name is Tyler Karen. I live at 39 Wyndham Road. I just want to make one point. And it's not even a social or scientific point. But I think that the idea of a community is that you are looking out for the people who are most vulnerable. And at this time, there is a pandemic and a variant virus that's making a lot of people very vulnerable. And one of those populations is children. If, I think it's a very easy thing to do to just say that those among us who are vulnerable will be protected by our communities. I think it's an easy thing to say that we should just have masks in schools. And that when that vulnerability is over, you can shed those masks. That's fine. But it's really alarming to see so many people in this community not willing to look out for those that are vulnerable at this time. That's all I have to say.
John Gasky at 162 Plymouth Street. So so far, there's been a lot of talk about anecdotes, anecdotal evidence and things like that. I work in engineering. I'm kind of a numbers guy. So I went on just before everything and pulled down, pulled down some of the latest data out of the state and CDC's website. So currently in Massachusetts, the average age of hospitalization is 65 years old. The average age of death over the last two weeks is 72 years old. Overall, in Massachusetts, the average age of death is 73. Number of cases currently over the last seven days, excuse me, last two weeks is 2,200. So just in Plymouth over the last two weeks, there has been only three deaths from COVID. Total number of cases, 674. In the U.S., over the last seven days, the average death is 492. In February of last year, well, excuse me, February of this year, it was over 4,000. They say that it's gone up 20% in the last couple of weeks. When your numbers are small, 20% seems like a whole lot. Not that much at this point. So when we look at our kids nationally, total deaths are approximately 450 deaths. Zero to four is a rough one, 141 kids. From ages five to 11, 93 kids. From 12 to 15, 123 kids. And from 16 and 17, 100 kids. This is since the beginning of the pandemic. Nationwide, 457 children, approximately. When we look at the flu, in 2018, there were 1,275 deaths between the ages of zero and 17. Close to three times as many COVID deaths as there are COVID deaths. So yes, COVID is serious. I lost my mother to it. But when it comes to our kids, yeah, some get sick. I worry about my kid getting sick. But guess what? They are all recovering with the exception of a small few. When you look at the aged, they are the vulnerable ones, not our kids. Our kids need to breathe. Hypercapnia is a real thing. I suffer from it because I have to wear a mask because I work in hospitals. It sucks. Don't put our kids in masks. Let them see each other. Let them smile. Just remember, communication, 92% of it is non-verbal.
But it's, um, a little over three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to offer a few comments for your consideration.
Could you provide your name and address, sir?
My name is Barb DiCosta. My name is Barb DiCosta, younger half of that, and I live at 71 West Street. Today, Governor Baker issued a statement that he has no intention of revisiting his earlier position of he would not issue a mask mandate and that he would leave it up to local communities for that decision. This from a governor whose track record in the earlier part of the pandemic was very strict with no indoor dining, masks, social distancing. Yet he feels comfortable enough now to say, "No, I'm not going to issue a mandate. I leave it up to the local communities." I would think it would be reasonable to conclude from that, there's no really right or wrong decision in his opinion. If you decide to wear masks, fine. If you decide not to, that's not a problem for him. And he's been pretty strict in staying with the facts and trying to put forth an intelligent position on it. I looked at the reports on COVID for the school up to June 17th, and listened to the report from the Board of Health, showed no incidence of COVID either in staff or in students. Now, you could say that that was because everybody was wearing a mask. But if you really want to prove that, look at the two months since the kids have been out of school without the masks, playing sports, going to camp, and all the other intermingling. And how many cases have surfaced in that two-month period? If the same answer is none, then how can you attribute the success to masks? The kids did not contract it during the two months that they were all co-mingling. I know it's a very emotional issue, but people should really try to control the emotion and deal with the facts and put some logic in there and make the best decision we can. I'm sure the committee will do just that. Thanks for the opportunity.
My name is Robert Harrington, 26 Beaver Dam Road. Thank you for taking the time to listen. I know you guys have heard from me before, and I know most of you probably think you know everything I have to say. I want to go a little more personal tonight. My father had COVID-19. He's 64. He's immunocompromised in ways. He's had two major surgeries and had a real trouble recovering from the last one, to the point where he called me up, had me come visit him in rehab. And it was probably the first time I ever saw my dad cry because he didn't think he was going to make it. Had nothing to do with COVID, but that's reality. That was a few years before COVID. My most, honestly, my most beloved older family members, an uncle of mine who was born in Holland, came here for the "American dream," quote unquote, but in all seriousness, worked his entire life here in the United States of America, a free man, raised his family, living what we all consider and take for granted the "American dream." This sounds kind of corny, but I really think it's actually being threatened at this point because all those people, my father and that uncle of mine and many, many others, would never dream of asking my son, "Could you put a mask on before you come give me a hug? Have you been vaccinated?" Or anything of the like. "Have you sneezed in the last two weeks? Have you traveled outside the state? Have you gone to Cumberland Farms and gotten an ice cream this summer? And have you been tested since?" And all that ridiculousness. They show up, they put a huge smile on their face. My son runs over, gives them a big, loving hug, and he moves on with his childhood, happy and knowing that the older members of my family love him, care about him, want a hug. He would never even question that because they grew up in an "American dream" that we no longer know and we're losing and we're giving it up to mandates and people deciding things for us. Now, I can completely understand that I don't know and I do not understand the outlook of some of the people that disagree with me on masking and vaccines and the like. But I would never dream of even considering to ask them to not have the option to mask, to not have the option to vaccinate. That is their choice. This is the United States of America. This is America. They get to choose what's best for them. And if they needed a ride to the hospital to get that vaccine and they thought that was the best thing for them, I'd get in my car and I'd drive them there. Now, I don't want a vaccine. I will not get one, quite frankly. I hate masks and I won't wear one. But I would drive that person to get theirs if that's what was best for them. In fact, my parents have been vaccinated. That uncle has been vaccinated. And that whole time through that whole story, he has lung cancer. My son still gets a hug. Please, keep in mind where you grew up and what we all take for granted, the "American dream." Remember, think back to the decisions your parents made for you, good and bad. We all make mistakes. Remember, think back to the decisions you've made for yourself and the decisions you maybe have made for your children. We all make mistakes. We all make good decisions. We all make bad decisions. But that's how we grow. That's how we learn. And that's how we show our kids it's okay to be human, et cetera. Do not consider doing what is completely and utterly un-American and telling the families what they have to do. You cannot mandate this. It certainly should be an option. I would not dream of taking the option away from somebody. But put yourself in my shoes if I see it differently. If I don't want to wear a mask, why should you be able to mandate to take away my decision? Just like I would never dream of taking away your decision to wear a mask if that's what's best for you and that's what you decide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've all heard from me already. I'm Kelly Neme. I live at 22 Thatcher Street. And this actually may be surprising to some of the people in this room, but I was one of the unshores on the survey. Masks or no mask, my daughter's probably going to go into school with one anyway, so it doesn't, the outcome doesn't matter to me. I have a father who is 71 years old who just survived a quintuple bypass during a pandemic. It was a major miracle, like literally a miracle. And people have made comments about the kids are intermingling over the summer. But to be quite honest with you, my child has seen less kids and less people this summer because she's home. She's not seeing 500-plus kids in one location. Last year, we quarantined for 10 days, 14 days actually, because one of the students in her class had COVID. Not a single other person in her class got COVID. And I firmly believe that that is because of the protocols that have been put in place. I can't imagine how my child would feel if she contracted COVID and then brought it home to her grandfather and he died. While I am horribly, horribly upset that she'll be starting school wearing a mask, it's not something that I want. No one wants this for their children. I just believe that at this stage, right now, with the Delta variant ramping up, that they need to be going back to school in a mask. They can take them off outside. They can take them off while they eat lunch. If they're spaced far enough apart and they're facing forward, they maybe can have a break then too. I just feel that at this point in this stage of the game, we need to protect everyone in our community, and I really appreciate that. And one of the things I do also want to say is I hate what this topic is doing to our community with neighbors fighting amongst neighbors and everybody getting angry on social media. I think just taking a step back and protecting everyone is something that we need to do. Staff, children, elderly, our entire community. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Marie Blotner, 14 Old Center Street. I just want to keep it short. I am not in favor of a mask mandate. I think that it should be left up to the families to choose. Sadly, this year, we have become intimately familiar with mental health issues in our country. And our pediatrician informed us that they are inundated with more mental health with children due to the policies in place. And we couldn't get a psychologist or psychiatrist for months, months. They wanted our child to stay in the emergency room for days. That's due to this, these are some of the effects. So children are suffering, are dying and suffering due to some of these mask mandates and social distancing requirements that the data doesn't even support us necessarily that they work. The data hasn't even shown us that this population is at high risk, if any risk. So it is infuriating that our choice is being taken away and our children's health, mental and physical, but mental for sure, is suffering as a result of it. And this is something nobody is talking about. And you know, our children are dying too because of mask mandates. And that's something that we need to consider. So I, you know, if we have to send them back to school in masks, we send them back to school in masks. But I think that people need to think that, you know, that everybody says the masks, the children are fine with the masks. They have no problem with it. But yeah, you know what? On the outside, they may not look like they have a problem with it, but that may not tell you what's going on on the inside. And I think that's something we all need to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Samantha Muse. I live at 26 Beaver Dam Road in Carver. And I just wanted to follow up on the psychological effects. I have already pulled my youngest child out of Carver. I don't want him exposed to this anymore. My older three children will remain, my older two children will remain at the public school, and I have another child in Old Colony. They'll remain there as long as there's no masks and mandates, but we're not sure what we're going to do with them yet. But I had continued to take my youngest child to tutoring over the summer, and we saw a difference. The teachers were not masking for the summer. The tutor was not masking coming out. And then two weeks ago, she started to wear a mask again. And I just kind of, at the end of one of the tutoring sessions, I said, "Hey, you know, what happened? Why is she wearing a mask all of a sudden? You know, she wasn't before." And he said to me, "She wasn't wearing a mask." And I said, "Yes, she was." And he said, "What do you mean?" And I said, "You didn't notice, Logan? You were sitting with her face to face for like an hour and a half." And he said, "No." And that, to me, I went home and I talked to Rob and said, "I don't think I can continue with this because my child did not notice that she didn't have a face for an hour and a half. She had no facial expressions, no..." She's teaching him to articulate and to read, and he wasn't even able to see her mouth moving, and in an hour and a half, he hadn't even noticed. And that, to me, I thought was just bizarre. Like, how do you speak to another human being and not even notice they don't have a face? And I thought that was like very bizarre and just, it's psychological abuse. For a child to look at another person and not even notice a difference between whether or not they have a lower half of their face or not, if they can smile at them, he just didn't even, didn't even see a difference because he's so used to seeing people in masks now that he doesn't even recognize the difference. And I thought that was very bizarre. So we actually pulled him out today out of tutoring, and he will just, he's going to be homeschooled this year. But I hope that you'll do the right thing and you'll allow families the right to choose for themselves and let the kids see each other. They need to see each other's faces.
Anne Thorand. I'm a resident of Plymouth. I am a taxpayer in Carver. I just wanted to let you know that, yeah, your responsibility is the town of Carver. However, the other school committees surrounding Carver are looking to you guys to set an example. It seems to be the trend. What is the next town doing? What is the next board doing? Both Carver and Plymouth for the last 18 months have always been able to rely on, while the governor says we have to do X, Y, Z, the State Board of Health and DESI says we have to do X, Y, Z. This is the first opportunity in 18 months where you guys are being presented with the opportunity to continue to do what you've been mandated by them, which is to allow parents in this situation to make the decision for their families. I would question if you're going to vote for masks and mandate masks, where do you draw the line? 12 months from now, six months from now, when the state says, "We strongly recommend COVID vaccinations, they're not mandatory," you know, we're going to leave it up to the Board of Health to decide. I mean, sorry, the school committees to decide. Is that, is that where you guys are going to draw the line collectively as school committees put in, Carver, wherever? Will you draw the line that you're not going to inject kids' bodies with an experimental, experimental vaccine? Where does the line get drawn? That's my big question. If you don't have to mandate masks right now, you can quite simply continue to do what you've done for 18 months and say, "We're going to follow the governor's orders and we're going to follow DESI's orders," then why take this on your shoulders? Why accept this burden? Send it on down the line. If the Board of Health at Carver wants to, wants to find it fit for them to go ahead and mandate, let them do it. But leave you guys' purview of education.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to make a comment?
Hello. My name is Crystal Webby. I'm at 69 Fosdick Road. I support the parents' choice to decide whether or not their child should wear a mask or should not wear a mask. I'm a mother of four, three of which attend the Carver Elementary School. And if masks are mandated by the board tonight, I'm going to pull all three of my girls and I will just, I'll have to homeschool them.
Hi. My name is Jeanne McGillicuddy, Peltola Lane in Carver. I have eight grandchildren, all attending the Carver schools from the elementary into the high school. I truly believe that we should not have a mandate. It should be left up to the parents. It's their decision. And once you start taking these choices away like this, it's just wrong. We'll all be controlled by government and everything else. And I think people are intelligent enough. If your child, if you want your child to wear a mask, go right ahead. If you don't, then don't. But this is just so much control, and it should not, it's wrong. It's wrong. We should be able to make our own choices and our own decisions. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that's in the room that would like to make a comment? I'd just like to remind you that now is the only portion of our meeting where members of the public are allowed to speak. So if you'd like to say anything, now is your opportunity. Do we have anyone on Zoom that has requested?
Well, I just wanted to first notify, but I think we've, we believe we've improved our situation at home. We'll find, I think we'll find out shortly. That's my understanding. And so right now would be the time for people who are at home, if they want to put their name into the chat, if they'd like to participate in public comment. The chat is open, and if you could just put your name in, that would be great. I do not see anybody going, putting their name into the chat.
Okay. So one last time, is there anyone in the room that would like to make a comment before we move on? Okay, so, okay. Your mother, right to the table. Just, please state your name and residence.
This is, I'm Antonio Torps, 18 Leonard Street, Carver, Mass. Obviously, Carver, Mass. I'm nervous, but...
Don't be.
At all point, two children that are in the school system now, and I, just for every, for every so-called information that is out there on how masks are benefiting our children, there's probably 10 that aren't. So I don't know where the information is coming, but the only question I have is why? Where's the proof? Has there been any proof that masks work? Because for every thing that you do come out with, there's probably 10, 20 things that show completely opposite. So how you can possibly have our children in masks for a whole day of school? And when they go outside, okay, take them off. But the point is, they're being restricted of God-given right to breathe. And that's not fair. That's my child. Vaccines are available. Vaccines are available for those who need the comfort to have the vaccine. It serves its purpose. I, on the other hand, I'm on the other side of it. To even CDC's own definition of what a vaccine is, mRNA is not a vaccine. So while it's being administered as a trial basis, FDA hasn't even approved it for anything but for emergency use. And here we are. And let's not even get into the point where the PCR test that we've been using that put us on this whole road is not, it's been taken off the shelves. Am I correct by the end of the year? So how can we possibly, how can we possibly, this whole pandemic that's come upon, upon all of us, I consider it to be more of a pandemic, but that's my own person. I don't push that on anybody else. That's just based on the research I've done. So if that... on anybody else. That's just based on the research I've done. So if that whole process, let's not even go back to Spaghetti Ferguson, the whole idea of his, that put us all really on this whole mindset that there's going to be millions of deaths. Plenty of doctors, plenty of virologists that have said that he was completely wrong. He has never been right. And, you know, as far as the PCR test, that was what we were working on, working with, I should say. And it's going to be taken off the shelves because of too many cases of false positives. And then when you find out what test is going to be made available, what is it, at the end of the year? But yeah, we're still working off of false, false positive tests that said that so many people have been diagnosed with COVID.
Thank you. I apologize. We have a three-minute time limit, and the.
That's fine. I just, I sitting home, wife's listening, and I, you know, been quiet. I, I just don't see myself being able to, as much as I want my kids, because they deserve it. They deserve what we had, to be able to go ahead and, you know, play with kids. Now I have to pull my kids out of school because I will not suffocate them. Killing our kids. Not seeing you guys, but if you guys don't stand up, it's going to be too late. You're keeping them, we need to get rid of our carbon dioxide, right? Carbon dioxide, certain amount that we take in. What about the studies that all the, the, that took a certain amount of kids, masks after eight hours, and then what they're finding as far as what can actually harm our children?
I understand. Thank you very much.
So why isn't that, why isn't that, why isn't anybody talking about that, though?
We appreciate you.
Yep, we appreciate you coming. We need to, we need to.
That's, that's.
Thank you. We have approval of minutes for the.
So we, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there are a few people now who are at home who are asking to speak.
My apologies.
So I have three people.
Okay, great.
Angela Fisher, Lindsay Silver, and then Jackie Perkins, I think, has asked you to come back.
Okay.
If, if the sound's working. So, so we'll find out in a second. So it's okay if we do Angela, and then Lindsay, and then, oh, we have another person. So.
Okay.
Well, I'm just keeping this list here. So we'll start with Angela first. Now, if you're at home, I need to promote you to a panelist, so it's going to take a second. So you're going to get a message inviting you to move to a panelist. And Angela, if you give me one second, you should be able to turn on your video. We'll find out, we'll see if our technology has improved.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
We can. So hopefully, we'll be able to continue to hear you.
Wonderful. All right. My name is Angela Fisher, and I live at 76 Forest Street in Carver. And so I joined this call today because my son, he will be starting his preschool journey this fall. And he's, he's looking forward to this. And I was really hoping that when the restrictions were lifted in May, that we were finally coming back to our senses and putting this COVID experience behind us. And I'm really upset to find out that this mask discussion is being talked about tonight. So I'm on this call to voice my opposition to any mask mandate in the Carver school system. So the growing confirmations of the schools in general becoming indoctrination camps already has me very hesitant to send my child to the school system. But should the decision be made to make the mask mandatory, I will be withdrawing my son from this preschool program. My child will not be taught that breathing fresh air is dangerous, or that it's normal to stay away from his peers. It's child abuse to make him breathe filth from a cloth mask to protect themselves from a virus that poses little to no risk. It's psychologically damning to not allow children to see and learn from the facial expressions of their teachers and peers. In my opinion, if the teachers are afraid of getting sick from the kids, maybe it's time we replace them with ones who aren't. We know the flu poses more of a threat than COVID, yet during flu season, life goes on. I ask of you today, let kids be kids. They deserve to go to school. They deserve to smile. They deserve to laugh. They deserve to be with their peers. I want my son to start school in the fall. So I ask you today, do not mask our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So Lindsay Silva, I have made your co-host, so you should be able to turn your video on, and I should be able to present. And obviously, we've solved our technical difficulties.
Hi, I'm going to keep my video off because I'm at work.
But we won't tell anybody, Lindsay.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that as much as the masks are such a big discussion, I think that educating our children is more important. For those who feel like.
Oh, no, your, your audio is cutting out.
Lindsay, you were strong, and we just lost you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we did. You dropped out for a second.
You don't have, your children don't have to wear cloth mask, cloth masks. They make paper ones as well as bowl, like I wear in the operating room, like I have for 15 years. If you teach your children that it is bad to wear them, they shouldn't wear them, that's the perception they're going to have. I think that I'm just more important about educating our children since they missed so much of it. So, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but my child will go to school whether wearing one or not. Like Kelly said, they get mask breaks, they take, they're not staying away from their peers. But I think that it's more important for education than this big mask battle. I'm just, I want to say, it's not unhealthy for children to wear masks. It's not, it's, kids wear them all the time, people wear them all the time. I wear them for hours at a time. I just feel like education should be the number one thing we're fighting for, for our children. So if people feel that want to take your children out of the school because of masks, then if you have that ability, then you should do so. But making it harder for other parents who want their children educated because you feel like your child will be harmed in some way, not okay. There are so many different things that teachers can wear, like face shields, that masks that are see-through, so you can see their mouth moving. Education is number one. We should be fighting for that, and that only. Sorry, I saw it. All I had to say. So hopefully, everyone makes the right decision, what everyone wants to do, as, you know, you can do it. But education, what you should be fighting for, not masks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up is Jackie. So Jackie Perkins is asking to come back up, even though she's already spoken, which she didn't really speak because we didn't, we only heard about a third of what she said. So Stephanie is, I'll defer to the chair in terms of allowing Jackie to speak again.
Absolutely.
So Jackie, you should be.
I'm turning on my video.
Okay, go ahead, Jackie.
It says I'm unable to turn my video, but you can all hear me?
All right, Jackie, give me a second. I just, I didn't make you a co-host. I'm just doing one person at a time. Now you should be able to turn your video on.
Okay, all right. I, I don't have to have the video, but.
But we want, we want, we want to see you, Jackie, so.
But I'm, I'm happy to, to be with you. And I'm really, like, so pleased to have been able to listen to public comment and come back. And so it was a happy mistake for me that I couldn't be heard the first time. What I'm hearing really from everybody is sort of an argument about, like, freedom versus caring for people who need to be cared for. I'm hearing a lot about choice and freedom, and, you know, I have that very deeply ingrained in me as well. In fact, I'm thinking, all our teachers have been vaccinated, and we're just now learning that a new variant is going to make them sick anyway. And of all of the voices that are heard here today, none of them are about the teachers who are captive in a classroom with potentially 20 people exchanging air that is as contagious as the chicken pox. And so I think that that's, that's really what spurred the letter to bargain that you'll read if you haven't already. I'm asking the school committee to delay making a decision about this tonight. I don't think it's wise to do it. And your teachers, and, well, I can't speak for the other union locals in the school district, but we will be here as soon as tomorrow or next week, as much as we possibly can, to come to the best resolution for everybody. Because if there's going to be choice, and I've got 47% who think we need a mask mandate here, and those 40, that 47% is in their classroom subject to illness, I don't think it's fair to say you should retire 20 years early.
Excuse me, Jackie, can you, Jackie, can you, sorry, can you just pause for a moment? Can everyone in the room, please, remain quiet? No one interrupted you when you were speaking, so can you please just afford the same opportunity to Jackie? Thank you. Continue, Jackie.
Yeah, so I can't, I can't hear you all. Catcalling me, if you're catcalling me, I don't know. But, but I think that there's been a tremendous show of facts and figures here tonight that are disparate and not coming together. And so I trust my superintendent, and I trust my union leader to look over facts together. I trust the school committee to do that in a cooperative process. And I look forward to doing it with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. We have someone next.
Yep. So the next up is Donna Fran. If you give me a second, I will make Donna a co-host. And then Donna should be able to turn on her video, and Donna should be able to speak.
Hello, how are you? So I'm Donna Thorand, and I'm speaking tonight as a resident in the town of Carver. I am over the age of 60, and I do have a concern about the masks for the children, and as well as any other adults. Because if you go into a restaurant, you're not required to mask at a table. And I just don't, I just find it hard to believe that we want to mask a student that's sitting at a desk. If you go to any of the local establishments, you don't need to wear a mask to enter the establishment. So my concern is, we need to let the children breathe, and as long as they're sitting at their desks, and, you know, they're behaving or whatever, they're not running around the classroom, which we know teachers are great teachers, and they don't let their students run around the classroom, they should be able to sit in the classroom and conduct their learning without a mask on. So I thank the school committee for taking the time to listen to all the parents tonight, and grandparents, and citizens in the town of Carver. And I hope that that's a decision for our students. And don't mask the students as mandatory. If the parents want to send them a mask, that's fine. But mandatory masking children needs to stop. Thank you, and have a great day.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the chat that would like to speak?
Do not see anybody else in the chat who's come forward.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I didn't hit my three minutes. Can I respond or ask a question about the union representative?
No, I'm sorry, public comment.
But they got the topic, it's a threat that it's a working condition, masks and.
She was allowed to speak the same way that everyone else was allowed to speak. You had your turn to speak.
Is it a requirement of the union that they mask the kids, or they're saying they won't, it's a working condition?
It's a working condition. What does that mean for parents? You mandate masks, or they're not going to work? Is that what she said?
That's what it sounded like. We didn't get to hear it because it cut out so much, and now she's saying she's not going to speak tonight, so we didn't actually hear what she said. But she said it was a working condition. So they're saying the union won't work if we don't.
No.
So, I'm, I'm okay addressing that if that's, if that's okay.
Go right ahead.
Stephanie. So in terms of, I don't think that's what she said. And then also, public comment is not a exchange of ideas between people. It's everybody's opportunity to speak. So it's just like you did, like everyone here this evening had the opportunity to speak. Mrs. Perkins had an opportunity, had an opportunity to speak.
You just said, yeah.
She just said that they've sent a message to, to the school committee asking to bargain over wearing masks. Unions have the right to do that. They have the right to bargain over issues they want to bring forward. So that's an issue they'd like to bring forward to the school committee. There's no decision on what, that doesn't mean there's been a decision on that. She's just notifying the committee that she's reaching out to them and asks to, asking to collectively bargain over masks. So we don't have any answers beyond that.
Bargaining with our children.
No, no, that would.
And held captive, I think, the other lady.
Would that just be with respect to the teachers wearing masks?
So you're bargaining with our children.
And she's captive.
Okay.
So I think we need.
Yep. Okay, this is, this is, this is now out of order. So we're moving on with our meeting.
We think it is out of order.
It is very out of order. You just had a union representative saying that our kids are going to be held captive.
You heard people speak very calmly, very politely, and then as soon as they open their mouth, you just turn like captive, and, and working conditions. We're not the ones that.
I think we need to.
They are.
Okay, so we clear the room?
Oh, you know, I think we just, I think we're ready to move on with our agenda.
We're just going to move on to the next item on our agenda. As I had stated, everyone was given their opportunity to speak.
So, so the, so maybe this will help if I give some clarification. And I am not, I don't, I am honestly not an expert on all collective bargaining legally. You know, obviously, the school, the school committee has legal representation. We, we, we work with that legal representation. Ultimately, the union, I think, is asking to bargain over anything that would be impacted by them.
To a change their working.
Right, to them wearing masks. So they have a right to impact on, impact bargain over a decision. It doesn't mean they're trying to make a decision about whether your kids wear masks or not wear masks. They just want to have that discussion. They have the right to, they have the right to ask to do that. So just like you have the rights here this evening to speak, they have the right to ask to bargain over something, and then we'll see what that progresses.
Because nobody's saying they can't wear masks if they don't choose to. So doubt of proof.
So, so again, I think we, I do think we need to, and I'm trying, I'm trying to provide some clarification to the best of my ability.
You got to know what it is.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
You said a working condition.
So we are going to move on with approval of minutes.
Yep.
You're welcome to stay if you could just, if you could just please be respectful.
No.
Is there going to be a vote tonight?
Possibly. We're, we're going to be hearing a presentation that's on the agenda regarding the guidance that's been issued.
I just want to make sure that we haven't gone past the vote.
No, no, we have.
So, you know, by, by not.
We just finished section two of the agenda, which is comments from the general public. We're now moving on to item three, which is approval of the minutes. There is a report later down on the agenda. The agenda is publicly posted. You can find it on the town website if you'd like to follow along. Please let us continue with our meeting.
Yes, I just saw it. And I just, just a point, just a quick point.
And the agenda is also posted on the screen.
Yes, it is. It's on, it's on the screen.
But by not voting tonight, if you guys opt not to vote tonight, you're putting, you're delaying everybody's decision. You're delaying things for them.
Kibbe, you're not helping this situation right now. This needs to end.
We're not, we're not, we're not delaying, we're not delaying anything.
That's very valid questions. You should be able to ask.
That's not the point of this discussion. This is not an open forum with a Q and A.
I don't know what to tell you. You should be able to ask.
This is not a Q and A. It's not a town hall format.
You should be able to ask the questions.
You are able to send an email, or to call Superintendent Neave's office. You're welcome to email any of us to ask us your questions, but you were unable to.
First, I need to email Superintendent Neve.
You need to understand that the general, comments from the general public portion of our meeting is not a question and answer session. It is an opportunity for people to speak. Everyone has had their opportunity to speak. Public, public comment has been closed, so we are moving on with our meeting. So if you would like to remain and can respect the rest of our proceedings, you're more than welcome to stay. If you cannot, then you are more than welcome to leave. So I respectfully ask that everyone please remain respectful and let us continue with our meeting. So, approval of minutes.
I move to approve the open session minutes from June 7, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And moving on to communications.
Okay, communications. We have one communication this evening. We are excited to announce that we were notified on July 30 that we've been awarded a Innovation Pathways Implementation Grant of $20,000. So the goal of that grant is to help support the build-out of our pathways programs. I want to congratulate Meredith again. So Meredith has been your person in terms of reaching out and getting grant funding for the district. And we're really excited about another grant opportunity to support pathways. And we're really excited about another grant opportunity to support pathways at the middle high school. More information to come about how those funds will be expended. We're excited about to have that $20,000 grant.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Meredith, and everyone that worked on making that possible.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Ready to move into reports from the superintendent?
Yes.
Hey, personnel update. So since our last meeting, we've had a couple of changes in personnel. We've had two new hires, Jamie Lee Belcher and Food Service. We've had a few resignations. Angela Patton is an ESP at the middle high school. Haley Hotley is an ESP at the middle high school. Sonia Straw is an ESP at the middle high school. And Corinne Schrodewitz is an ESP at the middle high school. We're actually happy to announce that several of those ESPs who resigned actually received teaching positions in different districts. So that was exciting for them. So we're excited for the opportunity that they have in terms of moving on with teaching positions. So we're excited about that.
Thank you.
I'm going to go right into COVID and Fall Return Guidance Update and possible vote.
Yes, please.
Give me a second. Hey, our COVID update and a review of the DESI and DPH guidance and recommendations. So our COVID update locally is the number of cases has been trending upwards slightly since we last met. This data is from the state's weekly reporting and the Cover Board of Health data as of Friday, August 13th. So from those two reports, the current case count over the 14 days prior to August 12th are 13 cases in the Cover community. Actually, this time it actually corresponds with our total number of positive tests, 13. So in the last two weeks, as of last Friday, there have been 13 positive tests and 13 active cases within the community. The total positivity rate for the last 14 days in that same period was 3.37. The numbers you see on the side are what it was at our last meeting, so we met a few weeks ago at the end of July. The current case count was less than five. The total positive tests over a three-week period was three, and the total positivity rate was 1.13. I also do want to note here, though, that we had no positive cases amongst staff or students in the Cover summer programs. So the Cover summer programs just ended this past Thursday. So we had students attending school from the week after July 4th through this past Thursday. So even when the case have been going up a little bit in the community, at least at this point, we haven't seen that in the school system. Now, obviously, I'm not trying to say that summer school is the same as school every day. You know, it varies between 100 and 150 students maybe in the buildings, 20, 30, 20 staff members or so. You know, those are roundabout numbers. But ultimately, during that time period, there were no positive cases amongst staff or students. So I thought that should be noted as we kind of give our COVID update for our summer programs. I do think as the school committee considers this decision about wearing masks and some of the recommendations and guidance, we should look at the vaccination rates within Cover. This is as of actually today. So the current vaccination rate for school-age population, 12- to 15-year-olds who are eligible in Cover, 26% have been vaccinated. And 16- and 19-year-olds in Cover who are eligible, 50% have been vaccinated. And the townwide vaccination rate is about 59%. Now, obviously, we're not tracking this data back to our students. So this is that age population for the entire community of Cover. So it doesn't mean that's exactly what it is for our students who would be attending school, but it does give us a sense of where we stand in terms of vaccinations within the Cover community. The DESI and DPH guidance and recommendations. So on July 30th, DESI put out these recommendations for school committees to consider. So I'm going to go over the key points. Number one, all districts are required to be in person, full-time, five days a week. And it's interesting they put this in here because I don't know if it's, I don't want to say it's not true. I think it's a little contradictory, but it is very clearly stated in the guidance that all other health and safety requirements are lifted. So they're saying, no matter what your situation is, students need to be in school. They need to be in school full-time. They need to be in school five days a week. And that school district should not be offering a remote option. It strongly recommends that all students in grades K through six wear masks when indoors. It strongly recommends that all unvaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students in grade seven and above, and unvaccinated visitors wear masks while indoors. So obviously, conversely, it's saying that if you're vaccinated in one of those groups, meaning grade seven and above or a visitor, that you wouldn't necessarily have to wear a mask. So recommend that vaccinated students and staff can remain unmasked. No one is recommended to wear a mask outdoors. So they're saying when you're outdoors, there's no recommendation for any masking in any shape. It does require, consistent with the federal guidelines, that all students and staff wear a mask on the bus. That is listed as a requirement and not a recommendation. So they're saying that's consistent with the public transit guidelines in the state of Massachusetts and federally. It also requires that all students and staff wear a mask in the nurse's office. So if a student was to report to a nurse's office, they should have a mask that they should wear. Again, that is not listed as a recommendation. It's listed as a requirement of the guidance. It recommends that schools host onsite vaccine clinics. And DESI has actually put out information saying that they would work with school districts and mass DPH to organize those vaccine clinics. You know, because there's a strong, as you read through the guidance, there's a strong recommendation that, you know, vaccination is maybe the best way for people, for us to combat the virus and the pandemic, and that we should be making opportunities available for people to get vaccinated. Again, none of this would be required. It would just be something the school would host and say, if you're interested in having your school-aged student get vaccinated, we could do that within the community. It highly encourages districts to maintain both diagnostic and screening testing or pool testing. So as you know, last year, we had diagnostic tested. We used the Abbott-Bicknell Rapid Test in the school setting for those who were symptomatic and whose parents wanted them to be tested. We also did pool testing of student athletes at the middle high school and of staff at both the middle high school and the elementary school. And the last part of the guidance, where I'm going to go into more detail, is they have a new close contact protocol called test and stay. And I'll talk a little more about that test and stay protocol. You know, there's been a lot of guidances coming over the last few weeks. So I thought it was important to at least touch on all of it, so the committee could consider all of it. So the CDC released their own guidance about schools. Sorry if some of this is repetitive. Sorry, I don't generally like to just read from the PowerPoint, but this is very information-laden. So I put all the bullets in the PowerPoint. It gives everybody the opportunity at home to read. It gives people in the audience the opportunity to read instead of just hearing me say it. So obviously, again, they're advocating for in-person learning, no matter what the circumstances. They make that statement of vaccination is leading the public health prevention strategy. So they're promoting vaccinations for those who are eligible. They do recommend universal indoor masking by all students aged two and older, staff, teachers, and visitors of schools regardless of vaccination status. In addition to universal indoor masking, the CDC recommends schools maintain at least three feet of physical distance between students within classrooms to reduce transmission risk. When it's not possible to maintain the three feet of physical distance, schools should still fully reopen. So there's been both a push at the federal level and at the state level that even if you can't maintain the three-foot social distancing in some aspects or some classrooms, that that should not be a block from you opening schools, that schools need to be open full in person for all students. Again, they're recommending screening testing, ventilation, hand washing, respiratory adequate, all similar things we did last year. And, you know, I think we would continue in terms of hand sanitizer being available, wipes being available, those types of things. And then students and teachers and staff should stay home when they have signs of infectious illness. You know, really making that push of stay home when you're sick, which was a constant message we sent to staff and to students and parents and families last year. Many schools serve children under the age of 12 who are not eligible for vaccination. Therefore, the guidance emphasizes implementing a layered strategy, using multiple prevention strategies, not just social distancing, not just masking in their recommendation, not just hand sanitizing, not just disinfecting, that you're doing multiple of these things. Says locality should monitor community transmission. And then the last point here, this isn't actually from the CDC, but it's just a statement that was made by the American Academy of Pediatrics. I'm going to make a separate slide for it. So they're kind of the third group that have come out here. You know, so we've had DESI come out in coordination with DPH. And DESI, and I didn't mention that, maybe I should have. The Department of Public Health is aligned with the Department of Education in Massachusetts. Their guidance is joint guidance. So that is, the DESI guidance is the guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. So we have those two groups. We have the CDC, and then we have the American Academy of Pediatrics who've come out. And they also recommend that all students older than the age of two wear masks in school this fall. So I want to talk about testing and close contact protocols a little bit because they actually tie to the decision the committee is going to make on masks. So ultimately, as we get into the recommendations, as I, going back, these are recommendations. And ultimately, as you know, it's falling to the localities to make a decision on what they're going to do in terms of implementing these recommendations. The only things that were requirements they're saying is a mask on the bus and a mask in the nurse's office. So as you consider as a committee some of these recommendations, I think you need to here at least understand what they're recommending for close contact protocols because it does impact the mask decision and some options people have in terms of masks. So this is not new, but I figured I'd just put it out there. DESI just released this guidance on Friday afternoon, late Friday, around 4:30, 5 o'clock. So we're just beginning to review it. This is not new. This is the same as last year. So any individual that tests positive for COVID-19 should self-isolate for a minimum of 10 days. And they can return to school when they're fever-free for 24 hours, experience improved symptoms. So return to school is based on time and symptom resolution. Repeat testing is not required or actually recommended. And that was the same protocol that we actually followed last year for people tested positive, is that we were asked to stay home for 10 days. If they were fever-free for 24 hours and they were feeling better, they could return to school. So that same recommendation is placed, no change. So something that has changed, they've changed the definition of a close contact. So close contact is identified as anyone who's been within six feet of a person for more than 15 cumulative minutes. The key thing is while indoors, so that's highlighted, during the positive person's infectious period. The while indoors was not previously in the close contact protocols. So in essence, they're saying, while you're outside at recess, you can't be a close contact. And we can all have our debates about whether that makes sense to us or not. But ultimately, they're saying if you're outside, it's impossible to be a close contact. You can only be a close contact indoors. And the person's infectious period is 48 hours from the time of beginning to feel ill, or if they're asymptomatic, testing positive. So what are their recommendations for close contact protocols? And so I'll say that I do think that while the state is not requiring school districts to implement the masking policy, they are strongly recommending it. And some of their protocols are really established to support that recommendation. And I think you'll see in these protocols that they're looking to support the recommendation of school districts requiring masks. So close contacts exempt from testing and quarantine. So if you're identified as a close contact, you had exposure to someone within six feet for more than 15 minutes indoors, you don't have to follow the close contact protocols. Number one, if you're fully vaccinated. I'm going to skip number two because that's the toughest one. Number three, you're on the bus. No close contacts on the bus because students are required to wear masks. So basically, they're making a connection between if you're masked, you can't be a close contact. Number four, close contacts who've had COVID-19 within the past 90 days. Going back to number two, I want to read this one and talk about it a little bit. An individual who was exposed to a COVID-19 positive individual, sorry, they use individual twice, but it's right from the guidance, in the classroom while both, I've highlighted the word "both", individuals wore masks as long as their desks were three feet apart. So what they're really saying, if you think of what they're saying here, they're saying if the school district was to implement a mask policy and require all students to wear masks, and our desks were three feet apart, there would be no, no one could be a close contact. Because you can't be a close contact outside, right? And on their guidance, they're saying if you implement the mask policy and your desks are three feet apart, and everyone's wearing masks, then you don't have to follow close contact policies. So in some ways, they're encouraging the wearing of masks by saying you're eliminating close contacts. There's no close contact protocols to follow. If that's not the case, then they have established close contact options. So if the school committee was to implement the DESI recommendations and leave it to family choice, and just tell people it's a recommendation, but you make your own choice, but then there is a positive person in the classroom, you are identified as a close contact because you're within six feet of them for more than 15 minutes indoors, then there's three options that they're recommending. The first one is called test and stay. And that would be a duration of seven days from exposure to the positive individual. The person can remain in school, here's the key point. So you don't have to stay home as a close contact. You can remain in school as long as you're asymptomatic. You wear a mask, so then they would be requiring masks of close contact to stay in school. Take a rapid test in the nurse's office daily and test negative. Self-monitor for symptoms for 14 days. So that would be one option that people would have. The second, I don't know, tell me if I'm going too fast. I don't know if there's questions on any of the options from members of the committee. All right?
No.
Good, all right. Close option two and three. I put two and three on the same slide. A little less information. Option two is very close to what it was last year. Quarantine for seven days from the date of exposure. You can return to school on day eight as long as you're asymptomatic. Receive the negative rapid or PCR test on day five or later after exposure. You self-monitor for 14 days. Last year, we never adopted the seven-day policy. As I'm sure you all remember, as the school committee, we stayed with 10. And we said you had to be out for 10 days, could return on day 11 with a positive test after day five. That was guidance that kind of came out towards the end of the year. The recommendation of our nursing staff was to stay with a 10-day quarantine period. The school committee accepted that recommendation of the nursing staff, and we never went to the seven days. Several districts did go to the seven days at the end of last school year. Option three is to quarantine for 10 days from the date of exposure. There is no testing required, and you can return to school on day 11 as long as you're asymptomatic or self-monitor for 14 days. Now, these close, as I said, this guidance all just came out Friday afternoon. We have not had a meeting of our full administrative staff. We haven't had a meeting of our full nursing staff to go over these close contact recommendations. We'll be doing that actually tomorrow. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to do that. You know, so they, like last year, the nurses said we really feel the 10 days is more valuable than the seven days. So at our next meeting, we might come back with some different recommendations on this. But I just wanted to put it out there and say this is what DESI is recommending. This is what their guidance is saying. And, you know, the impact really is, because I felt we had to talk about it tonight because it does weigh in on the mask piece. Because they're really saying, if you adopt a universal masking policy, then there really won't be close contacts unless we have that situation where our desks can't be three feet apart. And you're going to see later in the presentation, you know, we haven't gone to every room. We don't know 100% that every single desk will be three feet apart. But we're going to be able to, there's a real good chance we're going to cover most of that. That most classrooms will be less, three feet or more, actually, in terms of our class sizes, the spaces we have available. So we're going to have a very high threshold on being able to meet that standard. So I don't know if I digest, ask questions now?
Quick question.
Sure.
For clarification purposes only. If we adopted this guidance from DESI and the Department of Health, this new guidance on close contacts, this would still be the parent's option to choose one?
Correct. So that would be, so we would say if someone was identified as a close contact, like we did last year, you would get a phone call from the nurse or one of the administrators. Generally, it was the nursing staff or the administrators who made those calls. And you would get a call and say, your son or daughter, your students, but identify as a close contact. You can use option one. You can do this test and stay. They can stay in school, and they just need to be tested each day and wear a mask. And, you know, obviously be feeling okay. I'm assuming everyone's going with they're not feeling well, they're going to keep them home. Or you can choose option two, do the seven days. Now, again, we might come up with a different recommendation on that. I haven't met the nursing staff, but in theory, yes, they could option two. Or they could make the choice of option three of just stay home for 10 days, no testing, return on day 11. But we have to remind people that we do not have a remote option this year. Last year, there was a remote platform. Not all of our close contacts, but we had hybrid coaches. We had hybrid teachers. A lot of our close contacts were able to do some online learning while they were at as close contacts. You know, right now, we have not developed a system that is, there's not going to be a remote option. So we're not going to be able to say, okay, you're a close contact. So you're a second-grade student, going to move into the remote classroom. It would just be working with the teachers and the staff in terms of providing work as you would if you were sick pre-COVID and out for a few days.
Can I follow up?
Absolutely.
And on option two, what do you think the nurse's input might be that would change? Anything that would make a decision tonight?
Oh, nothing.
So we voted this in tonight. So if we voted this in tonight, they could recommend something different, would we have to have a different vote later?
So, we're going to talk about this later on, and this is a choice of the committee. What we did all of last year is if we just adopted the DESI guidance, you didn't vote for it. We just said as a school district, we're adopting the DESI guidance. If you adopted something that was different than the DESI guidance, you took a vote on it.
Like the 10 days.
Right, like the 10 days. So last year, we had you take a vote on the 10 days. I know the mask issue obviously is an issue that's very important to everyone, and we've had a lot of community output tonight through emails, through Zoom, you know, we've got a lot of input from people. So I would understand why the committee might want to take a vote on that specific issue of the masks. But in my opinion, I don't think we have to vote each in single piece of the guidance because what we've done in the past is if, if we're accepting that guidance, we just accept it. And if we're not accepting, if we're doing something different, then we voted.
Got you.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
But as I said, I would understand if the committee wanted to make an actual vote on the mask policy.
Okay. I just had a question about, you know, assuming someone wasn't subject to one, two, or three because they wear a mask to school, how are we going to confirm that or?
Yeah, so this, the guidance as identified here would be a, would take a lot of work in terms of monitoring. So it would take the work of everybody, it would take the work of the administrators, the nurses, the teachers. Teachers would have to be really paying attention to who's wearing a mask and who's not wearing a mask. You know, so if you adopted, if you adopted the DESI guidance and didn't establish a mask policy and in essence say, hey, it's strongly recommended, you know, it's clear, all these groups are clearly recommending masks, but families have a choice. And you get to make the decision whether they're going to wear a mask or not. That means teachers would have, teachers would have to have some sort of a tracking of, we've identified student A as a close contact, these are the students who sit around student A, who was wearing a mask and who wasn't. And if everybody was masked, then they don't have to follow the close contact protocols. If everybody wasn't masked, then they, we'd have, then we'd have to contact those families individually and do that follow-up. Now, in terms of the close contact, the work we did on that, we have, we have a lot of experience unfortunately with that last year. We did a lot of contact tracing, the nurses did a tremendous amount of contact tracing, the administration did a tremendous amount of contact tracing, and a lot of phone calls. It's a, it's a lot of work that would just have to be done by the school staff.
Jen?
Point of clarification, didn't it say with the masks that both individuals, so if the person who tests positive wasn't masked, then it would be irrelevant?
That, that is correct, that is, that is the, that's the, that is the detail. So I can understand why, you could be a parent who's making a decision to send your student to school with a mask and they could still end up being a close contact because the positive student's family made a decision to not wear a mask.
Another question. If I'm understanding correctly, the only thing that DESI is mandating at this point is masks on the bus and masks in the nursing, nurse's office. So everything else in this guidance, including this close contact, is a recommendation which we could choose to adopt or not. Am I correct?
That is correct. So everything else here is a recommendation. And as I stated earlier, you know, in the past, we, if you wanted to vote something that was different than, if you wanted to do something different than the recommendation, I think the committee would have, should take a vote on that. That'd be my recommendation. Obviously, the committee can choose what it would like to do.
Any other questions?
No, not on this.
Right now?
Do you have more to go?
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have more, we have more, we have more to go, unfortunately. So we did survey parents and guardians, so we're going to share the parent guidance survey from the elementary school, from the middle high school, and then also from the staff, as Jackie and Stacy had referenced earlier, and Tom, I don't know if Tom referenced it or not. So, you know, it was a very simple question of, at the elementary school, do you support a mask requirement, not support a mask requirement, or are you unsure? We had 392 total family responses, 52.8% said at this time they favored no mask requirement, 36% said they would support a mask requirement, 11% said they were unsure. Similar data at the middle high school. Now, the middle high school, we actually add that question in because the guidance, if you, if you look at the guidance for the middle high school, it actually is recommending that if you're vaccinated, you not wear a mask, if you're unvaccinated, you wear a mask. My senses from the committee from, that may not be something you're interested in, like implementing as an official, like mandate policy that these people have to wear masks and these people don't. I think it's either masks or no masks for everybody, that's my opinion, that'd be my recommendation. But we asked people the question, how they felt about that. So 48.2 said no mask requirement, 20.7 said mask for the unvaccinated, 26% said a mask requirement, 4% said unsure. From both these survey results, I think it's, in my opinion, my interpretation of this, and you can have your own interpretation, is it shows that what we already know is that people are highly divided over this issue. People don't, people have their opinion of what they believe is the right thing to do and they might feel strongly about that opinion, but that opinion is pretty divided. You know, if you look at, if you look at our percentages here and how people responded.
Can you go back one, Scott?
I can go back one, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the EAPC, as they referenced, they did survey their staff, they had 110 responses. 47% were from the elementary school, 50.9 from the middle high school, 1.8 were district-wide staff therapists who work in both buildings. And as Jackie referenced, 47.3% of the teachers said they would be in favor of a mask mandate, 30.9 said they would not be in favor, and 21%, 21.8% said maybe, that said they were unsure at this time in terms of having a mandate in terms of masking. Any other questions on the survey results?
Evan?
So, social distancing. Guidance is do the best you can to maintain three feet in classrooms and cafeterias. And the majority of our classrooms will be three feet of more. The goal right now, the elementary schools decide they're going to keep desks in all the classrooms and not return the tables pre-K through 5 because it just helps maintain that three feet, helps maintain that social distance. The elementary school is going to be able to maintain desks in the cafeteria facing forward at six feet apart. So at this time, the plan in terms of those multiple mitigation strategies would be to maintain the desks facing forward six feet apart. At this time, our goal is to return the tables to the middle high school. We talked about this last year. The middle high school lunch was a real issue in terms of meeting the six feet standard. Technically, you don't have to meet the six-foot standard anymore. They're saying do the best you can in three feet and do your best you can there. We really want to return to a full day schedule and not do a shortened day schedule like we did at the very end of last year. We'd said to the committee at that time that that was a Band-Aid, a six-week measure that we were going to put in place. So our intention is to return to the full schedule to middle high school, but that would require returning tables into the cafeteria. And we're still working on whether, we might have to have an additional lunch, might be four lunches, it used to be three, because that will keep fewer kids in the cafeteria. So more information to come on that. There is a recommendation to keep assigned seating in cafeterias and our goal is to do that. And we've had, we've had some discussions about, last year, we did some traffic pattern things at the middle high school in terms of one-way stairwells. That actually worked out fairly well, we're supportive of keeping that. So there are other mitigating strategies we're looking to put into place in terms of social distancing. Cleaning and sanitizing, we'll be sanitizing both buildings on a weekly basis. Hand sanitizing stations will be set up in both buildings as they were all of last year. We're going to keep the same hand sanitizing stations. Wipes will be regularly available to all staff to wipe and sanitize desks and surfaces as needed. You know, we'll still have plenty of masks available for those people who want masks, whatever decision the school committee makes, whether it's optional or required, we have the masks on hand and can certainly supply them. We have tons of wipes available, we'll still be able to supply all the wipes and all the cleaning. You know, last year, we did the sanitizing twice a week. We ought to take a step back from that. A lot of the guidance has come out saying that there's less concern about it being a contact-spread disease and more obviously airborne and air particles. But we feel like some of these sanitizing practices were just good practice anyhow. So we're going to maintain the weekly fogging of the building and the hand sanitizer stations and the wipes. So what's our recommendation at this time? Our recommendation is to not institute a mask mandate at either school, that's the administration's recommendation. Make the school committee aware of DESI and DPH guidance and allow families to make a decision if their students will wear masks. Continue to track community and school COVID-19 data. So, last year, we had the COVID tracker. We haven't been running that over the summer, as I announced today, we haven't had any positive cases in school staff over the summer. But our, you know, our goal would be the first week of school to institute the tracker again, set it out on Mondays and Thursdays like we did last year. I would like, I'd like to at least mention this evening that it's not my intention to send an email on every positive case like I was doing last year unless the school committee directs me to do so and you want to see me do that. I think that, you know, I think there were people who, who thought that was valuable to get that information. I also think there were people who were very, who were concerned about getting that email on a regular basis of, we had this positive case today. All that information's available on the tracker, it's available on Mondays and Thursdays. If you want to track what's happening with COVID in the district, you'll be able to go to the daily tracker twice a week, see that data and be up to date. You know, obviously, if you're a student, your son or daughter was identified as a close contact or had a, had an exposure to COVID, you're going to get a phone call or an email, or an email and a phone call. And sometimes we aren't able to reach people, you send them an email and follow up with them the next day. But you'll, you'll definitely be contacted individually. And if you don't get that individual contact, then you just have to worry that you haven't been exposed. But you can check, check the tracker. That's what I'd like to do this year in terms of, instead of sending the daily email. Don't necessarily need to, so you guys can think about that. Because I, my guess is we're going to meet one more time prior to the opening of school and you can, you know, give, give some feedback on that. Implement the close contact protocols, you know, obviously, as I said, we haven't had, we just been released Friday afternoon, the administrative team, the nurses haven't had a sit-down yet to go over all that. We might come back with some different recommendations. But based on if there was, if we were saying, we're just going to follow the, give families a choice, if families have the option, then there has to be close contact protocols. And I think we would implement those in some, very close to in line that was, was presented tonight. You know, obviously, we want to take a look, we wanted some more time to take a look at that. We would like to implement pool testing and some more information to come on that. That's actually part of our discussion tomorrow as well. We're going to talk about who we're recommending for pool testing. You know, I think the minimum of the recommendation would be the same as it was last year to do all staff and to do our athletes to middle high school. People thought that was valuable. We got a lot of positive feedback for doing that last year. And then I'd make the recommendation, because I think we need to discuss this, to hold a vaccine clinic at the beginning of the year, for me to reach out to DESI and set up a vaccine clinic at the middle high school or at the elementary school. You know, obviously, it's not required, no one has to go to it, but it would make it an option available for the community to increase our vaccine rate. My personal opinion, I personally believe, and I know this may not be everyone's, but I, I'm going to state what my personal belief is. My personal belief is that the vaccine is the best way out of this for all of us and that we should be encouraging people to get the vaccine. Not saying people don't have a choice, they certainly do. I don't want to take anybody's choice away, I don't want to force anybody to get the vaccine, but I also feel like we should be making it available to people who want to do that. So I would, but I do think as a committee, we should discuss that, whether we'd want to hold a vaccine clinic sometimes towards the beginning of the school year. So tho, those are the current recommendations. I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts?
I have a question about, you had mentioned the cutting back to sanitizing once a week. What is, what is the plan for buses? Is that going to, are they going to continue to be sanitized with the same?
We actually haven't discussed that.
Or have you discussed transportation yet?
Where we are with transportation. So we'll get, we'll get back to that.
Okay. Thank you. Andy?
Did you want to talk about, do you want a decision on vaccine clinics now at this meeting or?
That's your choice. So that, they're making that available throughout the fall. If you wanted to, if you, if you were making a recommendation to bring that back as a separate discussion?
I just didn't know if you wanted, if you needed it sooner rather than later.
No, I mean, obviously, the sooner that we have that decision, the sooner I could set up the, work with the DESI and DPH to set up the clinic. But their goal is to be offering them throughout the fall. So if you wanted to bring it back as a separate item, because I know we're throwing a lot of stuff here. So if you wanted to bring that, bring that back as a separate item, we could certainly do that at the next meeting.
You want to discuss it now or later?
I, I would not be in favor of having a vaccine clinic at the school. We already had one and people participated in it, but for families that have made the decision for their children to not be vaccinated, I feel like it's pushing it back on them. Anybody can walk into any CVS, Walmart, I think Walgreens, their doctor's office and get a vaccine for free without even an appointment. Every time I go into any of those places, you know, come right up and get your vaccine. So I feel like the vaccine's already available for anyone who wants it. I, I would not be in favor of doing another vaccine clinic at the school, I feel like we've already done that. And I want to try to be respectful for families that have made the decision to not vaccinate their children who may be old enough. And I feel like doing a second one at the school would upset those. For people who want to get their children vaccinated, they have a plethora of opportunity to do it. That is my opinion.
Okay.
Would Carver EMS be running this if it weren't happening again?
No, so I, I don't know how EMS would be tied into it. This is directly being offered from DESI and the Mass Department of Public Health. So it would actually be the school district partnering with DPH. So I'm not exactly, I don't know that I have to reach out to them. So really, that's before I made that outreach to say, before I made the phone call and said, yes, Carver wants to have a vaccine clinic, I wanted to bring it up here and have that discussion. Because if the committee's not interested in it, then I won't make that phone call. Then I could get that detail of who would actually be, whether they would then contact EMS to help facilitate the clinic or not. That would make sense to me that they would, that they, they have a mechanism to do that and that it would facilitate through EMS. I do know that they have some vaccine buses that DPH is running and they're actually bringing, and so, so you're getting the vaccination on a bus that deep, that Department of Public Health actually is driving to the school. I know that's one of the options in terms of doing it. So then that obviously wouldn't involve any other town entities in that decision.
Well, I, if you want my opinion on it now, I mean, I think everyone knows my opinion on it. But I would be against having another one at the school myself. I, I feel the vaccine for, for young kids especially are more detrimental than they're worth and with the myocarditis and heart inflammation and blood clots and everything else, I also, maybe this, it's not meant to sound the way it's going to sound, but I want to put the kids' safety first, but I also don't want to put our school district in legal jeopardy. Okay? And that's what you have to think of when you're on a board like this. That's just my opinion, I would, I would be voting no for that myself.
Okay. Carl, anything you'd like to say?
I mean, again, I would just see it as, it's not pushing it on anyone, it would still be a parent's choice, but they're going to go to Walgreens or some vaccination bus outside the school. So I think, you know, you're not going to be forcing anyone into anything, it's a parent's choice.
I'll just add, I don't, I'm, I'm neither for or against the vaccine, I'm not stating an opinion on that. I feel like the DPH making it available in some communities where, you know, maybe people don't drive, you know, you know, cities and things like, you know, where people may not have access to get to a place to be vaccinated, that that would be a very useful tool. I feel like the Carver community, anybody who wants to be vaccinated has the capability. I don't think that there's a population of people in Carver that don't have the ability to get themselves to a place to be vaccinated. So I just, I've had multiple parents reach out to me saying that they feel like their children are being pressured into getting the vaccine from multiple sources and they're upset about it because they've made a family decision to not vaccinate. And, and they were concerned about another clinic specifically because they don't want, you know, their kids coming home with this. To, to them, it feels like propaganda. So I'm trying to be respectful to all. And I think that if people want to get vaccinated, there's opportunities, but I want to be respectful for those that are choosing not to. And so I just think that the school, the school's already done one and made it available to anybody who wanted to this past spring. And, and at this point, if somebody didn't take advantage of it at that time and they want to get vaccinated, there's plenty of opportunities for them to do so at other places. So I'm just trying to be respectful to those voices that have reached out to me. I'm not making a statement whether I'm for or against vaccines or whether I think you should or shouldn't. I think that is a personal family decision and I want to be respectful for everyone in that. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Sorry. I just want to say that I also want to be respectful of everyone. I respect a parent's right to choose whether or not they vaccinate their student. I think it's important where we are a part of this community. I don't see the harm in us offering a vaccination clinic. We certainly wouldn't be pressuring anyone to come. It would just be communicating that it's available and then families can make that choice for themselves. So I personally would be in support of offering a vaccination clinic at the middle high school or the elementary school, whatever location was deemed to be the best fit for that type of offering, so.
So ba- based on seeing two people saying support and two people saying not, I know there wasn't a motion and a vote, but from that discussion, obviously, there's some kind of concern about that. So I would think we would put that on hold for right now.
Can I make one more comment on this?
Absolutely.
Just something I forgot to put in earlier. I, I don't have any problem with someone choosing to get the vaccine. That's their choice. It's their personal option. I have no problem with that. Like Jen said, I just don't, something I forgot, I just don't think the schools should become an avenue if, to get into people's personal health and, I mean, being mandated from the state or to run them at the schools for, even as an option. I mean, I just don't think the schools should be getting into people's health decisions. That's just my opinion.
Thank you for sharing your opinion.
So I'll put that on hold.
Yes, for now, if you could, yeah. And I guess you can move on to what's next.
So it's really, Julie, I'm, that's the end of the presentation. I'm going to, discussion of the committee and what actions the committee wants to take.
I did have a question about the pool testing. I know you had said that you had put it into place in the middle high school with spring athletes. So what would that look like going forward for elementary and middle high school?
Don't have a specific recommendation on that at this time. So at this time, I'm saying that I feel like the only thing that we would, I think that will support is the pool testing of the staff. So the staff has already said that they're interested in that and maintaining pool testing. And there has been some interest of maintaining that for our athletes because of the amount of contact that they have with each other. As I said, this guidance is all fairly new, so I'll be coming back to the committee with a specific recommendation around pool testing. It would just give us a little opportunity in terms of having the administrative staff and the nurses get together and come with a specific recommendation. But you have to be involved in the pool testing program to do test and stay. So you have to be offering a testing program to be involved in that, which we were anyhow. So our intention was to maintain the diagnostic testing anyhow. That's something we did, I think we started in probably right after the holidays last year, I think first week in January, maybe the, was when we started, it might have even been the week before the holiday break. But December, January timeframe is when we began. That's when that, that's when the rapid test was available for us to give to symptomatic students in school with parental permission. We started that program at that time. I think minimum we continue that. But to do test and stay, you have to be involved in some sort of testing program. So we'll, we'll come back at the next meeting with a more specific recommendation around pool testing.
All right.
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
You have the floor.
All right. I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to, I'll just, I wrote it out here. I move that the Carver Public School District shall not require the wearing of face masks by any student, staff member, or visitor on school grounds or events held on school grounds. The wearing of masks shall be optional per the choice of the parents or the guardian and that the Carver School District shall adopt the DESI guidance on close contacts.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Can you repeat that?
Oh, sorry. I know it was a little long, sorry. I move that the Carver Public School District shall not require the wearing of face masks by any student, staff member, or visitor on school grounds or at events held on school grounds. The wearing of masks shall be optional per the choice of the parents or guardian and that the Carver School District also adopt the new close contact guidance from DESI.
Can I make amendment to that motion?
Sure.
I would like to make amendment to strike the latter portion about adopting the close contacts recommendations by DESI because I have some serious concerns with them.
So you are saying that you don't want a mask for anyone?
I want it to be optional.
You want to, okay, so to be optional.
I was just saying no mandate.
No mandate.
Right, with all the extra entities and parties.
Right, right. Okay. So we have a motion and we have an amendment to said motion, so.
So you have amendment first?
No, we can do the original first.
I think you have to do the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay. We will vote on the.
Oh, we need a second on the amendment.
Right, yes. We do not have a second on the amendment. So we have a motion.
Andy's made a motion, Jen's made a second. I mean, Jen's made an amendment, someone needs to second her amendment.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second.
So vote on the amendment.
Is there any, is there any discussion of said amendment?
I'll just add that I feel like the close contact protocol as it's written by DESI has some flaws and contradictions in it. And I'm not comfortable making a vote on it until after the administration team and the nurses have met to discuss and come up with their own recommendations. And I would like to see what they come forth with before we make any decisions. I don't feel like we have enough information. It was just released Friday at like 4:00 PM. And I just, I, I feel like it's too hasty to make a decision on close contact protocols at this moment in time.
Okay.
That is why I made that amendment.
Okay. And I'm also new to the process, but I feel like we need to have something in there discussing the DESI guidance where it's strongly recommend but not requiring. And I, I'm not, I'm not seeing a motion in front of me.
Well, because.
He's saying no masks.
Right. So DESI left it up to us.
Right.
Right, so we don't have to do everything, we don't take all their guidance or even put it all in, into our motions.
Right.
You know what I mean? So they basically left it up to us. Good.
I can make a suggestion, but the committee would have to take, you know, a possible way to, it would have to be amended again, so we'd have to make an amendment, which I can't make an amendment, but I can make a suggestion is that, I think, Colleen, what you're saying is it might be better if the motion was more along the lines of just adopting the DESI guidance, which strongly recommends but does not require the wearing of masks. And that's a little different than what you, your statement.
Right, that being, because my statement leaves it as no option for the administration or anyone to say they are now requiring a mask later on. You know, so, because leaving it on your end, open-ended, not to make the administration the bad guy, it could change.
Yeah, I don't think, and once if this committee took a vote to institute that, we'd have to come back to have the committee vote something different.
What you're saying is we're, we're accepting the DESI guidance of strongly urge, you know, so it's not saying like really one way or another.
Strongly recommend.
Strongly recommends, but it's a parent's choice.
But not requiring still leaves it up.
I wanted something in there that was definitely made it, said it was optional for those parents, the parents' choice.
But not requiring means it's optional.
I'm inclined to agree with you. I was.
I wanted to make sure who was making the decision that it's not required.
The way to, the way to move forward is take a vote on that amendment and if it doesn't pass, then someone can make an amendment.
Because the amendment is just on the close context. I mean, we can vote, I added that in there because we could also always change it later. Like, so I asked about the nurse's decision earlier, you know? But it's fine, we can, we can leave it out and decide it at the next meeting. You know, so I have no problem with your amendment on that.
Okay, so.
I said, I guess I have an amendment to your motion.
So why don't we do her, sorry, go ahead, Steph.
Okay, so would it, would it be helpful if he repeated his motion and Jen repeated her amendment or not?
I mean.
So what do you want to amend? Did you want to amend what Jen did?
I, so my, procedurally, my recommendation would be that you take a vote on the motion as amendment as stated. And then if it doesn't pass, then there could be a new motion.
Okay.
So let's vote on my amendment and then we can, you can.
I mean, yeah, then you can make a new amendment.
Or make a new motion, just make it to.
Okay. So we don't, do we need to make this rule call? No, because it's, it's just open, okay.
This is not a, this has to be a rule call.
All those in favor of Jen's amendment to the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay.
Nay. So.
Okay.
Are you?
I mo, I make a motion to amend Annie, excuse me, Andy's.
Motion.
A motion to amend Andy's original motion to include language saying that we implement DESI guidance that was released on July 30, 2021, where it strongly recommended but not required students in grades K through six, unvaccinated staff and students in grade seven through 12, and visitors to wear masks.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, so we have another amendment and another second. Is there any discussion about Colleen's amendment? So we're just adding language saying that we strongly recommend, correct? Is that what this is essentially doing?
That was my understanding.
Do you want to see my original?
Yeah, can you just read it one more time, Andy?
Okay, sorry. I was working this up as we were talking, that's why, that's what I was doing on my phone. That's why I didn't have a copy of it. So my original motion was, I move that the Carver Public School District shall not require the wearing of face masks by any student, staff member, or visitor on school grounds or at events held on school grounds. The wearing of masks shall be optional per the choice of the parents or guardian. That's, that's striking, that's with her amendment.
So, yes, and then the amendment, so, I don't want to speak for you, Colleen, so then you are.
How does that differ from the guidance? It's just strongly recommended, but you just wanted to.
It really doesn't, yeah, it really, I want to.
He just is not putting the word strongly recommended in.
Yeah, I just wanted the word out, out there that it was optional for the parents. That it was, it was optional for the parents. The, the word, the way the DESI guidance was, motion was worded, it sounded like it was up to somebody else, either the state or the administration.
And that's not how I interpreted the.
That's what I did.
Me either. It says strongly recommended but not requiring.
Right, but who gets, it doesn't say who gets to make the decision.
The parent.
The parent gets to decide.
Does it say that in the, in the motion?
Not requiring leaves it up to.
Well, see, I read that, I read that differently. I read that, that, like, it kind of gives you no leeway. I mean, it's undirectional, basically. There's no direction of who's to make that choice.
I don't see the harm in making it specific, but I agree with Colleen that I think that as a district, we should include that we are strongly recommending the wearing of masks while not requiring it.
So you're going to add that to my amendment, I mean, my, my motion?
I think that's what Colleen.
So my, so the, so the parental option would still be in there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's, as long as it's worded in there.
But I think we have to have clarity on what the motion is.
I was going to say, yeah, what is the amended, amended motion? So we can all make sure that we understand what you're, Colleen.
All right, let me, because, well, just to see where we were.
Right.
Andy made a motion, Jen made an amendment to that motion.
Right.
You voted on that amendment, but it was two to two, right?
No, three to one.
In support of it?
You voted in favor, Colleen. I voted against.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with holding off on the close contact protocol. That was the amendment, correct?
But.
No, because I really think the, the amendment was a whole lot, was to adopt his language without.
As amended by Jen.
As amended.
Right, that's right.
So then we've, then if it was three to one, then the committee has already voted in favor of that.
No, I believe the, what I was voting on was just to strike the close contact.
Right.
I hadn't voted on the original.
Okay. So it goes back to my original motion.
Correct.
So we're back to your original motion.
Right.
With the close contact piece stricken.
That's right.
Because we amended that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
So now what's your original? Or I could make a more simple, I could make a more simple motion and just say, the wearing of masks in the Carver Public School System is strictly optional, but is highly recommended, highly recommended through DESI or however you want to word it.
Strongly recommended but not required.
But not required. That sounds better.
So what's that?
Right, I, I guess I'm, I'm lost on how it differs from guidance because guidance, it says that they're, you know, required to wear them on the bus, required to wear them in the nurse's office. So is your motion going to override that?
No.
Yeah.
It's already accepted, right?
I think we should, I think that's a good point. I think that, I think we're all maybe a little unclear as to what the end motion is.
All right, hold on, hold on.
So Andy, you could retract your motion, make a new one.
Yes.
All right, let's do that. Okay, I retract my motion.
Do we need a second and a vote on the retraction or can he just retract?
He can pull it.
Okay.
All right, hold on.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, why don't you, go ahead.
Okay.
Trying to find my other one.
Being that I'm not a doctor, being that I'm not a public health official, I'm not an epidemiologist, DESI and the Department of Public Health has issued recommendations regarding masks. I move that this committee adopt the masking portion of DESI's guidance, which states that they strongly encourage unvaccinated individuals to wear a mask, but do not require anyone to wear a mask. That it be left to each individual family, parent, legal guardian to choose whether their child wears a mask and each individual adult person to choose whether or not they wear a mask where it is not mandated. Therefore, everyone shall wear a mask on the bus and in the nurse's office as mandated because I don't believe we have the authority to override DESI mandates. But where they are encouraging, that's where there's leeway and I am going to rely on the research they've done. If they don't think it's necessary to mandate, as an accountant, I don't think the numbers in Carver justify us mandating when DESI does not. That's not on the motion, that's just me kind of.
Okay.
And you, your motion and thoughts.
So, so, so is the motion, is the motion to, but is the motion to go against DESI guidance or to change the guidance?
No, the motion is to follow the DESI guidance.
Okay, we don't need the motion.
Ron has been, Ron has, Ron's been listening and he has suggested, which obviously Ron and I can't make motions.
So I think we should strongly encourage but not require masks and it is up to the family's decision where DESI is not mandating it.
Which is.
That's a very, that's a clear motion.
Everyone have something to say?
I was just trying to capture the note and share it back.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
So can you read back the motion, Ron, if you don't mind?
I think Gina should.
Or Gina, do you have it? Sorry, Gina, do you, do you have it?
Gina's earned her money today.
Or did Ron send it to you? You have it? Okay. I just want to make sure that we all are on the same page before anyone votes.
What I have for the motion in recorded minutes says, motion to adopt the masking portion of DESI's guidance, which states that they strongly encourage masking but does not require masks and leaves it to the family's decision where DESI does not require it.
That sounds all right.
Strongly recommend instead of encourage, I think, if I can make a motion.
Jen said encourage, but.
Yes.
Right.
Well, I'm just saying, do we need a motion if it's, how is it different than what the guidance is, I guess is the, is the clarification.
We don't need a motion, but I would like to make one anyway.
Okay. I, I guess I'm having trouble understanding how your motion differs from the DESI guidance other than leaving out the close contacts.
It doesn't.
Well, if you get the, if you get the motion in the second, then we're going to discuss it as well.
Right. So I was just saying.
So Jen has a motion on the floor?
Right, so I was just saying, okay.
I'm moving that we adopt it.
Okay.
Second...
No, your language is just, it's just different, that's all.
Second.
It's not saying adopt the guidance, so, okay, so we have a motion and we have a second.
All right.
And just one more point for, Gina, would you read it back one more time, so everyone's clear on what the motion is?
Yes. Motion to adopt the masking portion of DESI's guidance, which states that they strongly encourage but does not require masks, but do not require masks, I apologize. Does not, does not make sense. And leave it up to the family's decision where DESI does not require it. I'll read it one more time, I'm sorry. Motion to adopt the masking portion of DESI's guidance, which states that they strongly encourage but do not require masks and leave it up to the family's decision where DESI does not require it.
Okay.
That's good.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Was there any other, did you have any change?
No, I, I think I got my clarification.
Do you want to amend or recommend from encourage?
Oh, no. I mean, essentially the same word.
Okay. All those...
Oh, sorry. No, no, just, that satisfies, satisfies my, my wish to leave it up as optional for the parents, as that was, I wanted to make sure that was clear. You know, that's, that was my only, my, the wording of the, from the DESI one made it, I didn't say who got to make that decision. I wanted to make sure the parents, it was in, it was in black and white.
Okay. So we have a motion and we second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. So, three to one. So, moving on to professional development plans for...
Okay, professional development plans for the school year 2020. Meredith is going to give us an overview of the upcoming professional development that's planned, big picture overview, for the first three opening days of school and for the beginning of school.
Thank you, are you putting...
I'm sorry, we're still in session. Could you please exit the room quietly? Thank you.
Share my screen, Meredith, and I'll pull up the presentation.
Please, thank you.
There we go, here we go, Meredith. All right.
I'm developing a complex, but anytime I have to present, boom, everybody leaves. No, I'm just teasing. I'm just joking. All right, so, um, per usual, every year about this time, we try to update the committee on what our plan is for professional development and professional growth during the year. So, Scott, do you mind clicking? No, that's okay. Thank you. So I've tried to keep this brief, and I've just broken it down into kind of two different sections. One would be district-wide activities and then what we're planning at the school level. And just as a note, when we've come together through various avenues, whether it's the Professional Development Committee, or the Administrative Leadership Team, or the individual school site councils, one of the key components that we look at for professional growth is alignment with the goals and the improvement plans that we have, because the idea is to make sure that we're supporting teachers with their professional growth so that we can move those goals along. So at the district level, we have three days this year before students come back. Whoops, do you mind going back?
Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. And we have some district-wide opportunities, so we'll be hearing a training and a presentation on culturally responsive practice. And then we'll continue throughout the year with prioritizing social emotional learning as we have in the past. And then additionally, we have some role-specific training, so we'll have district-wide ESP training and Aspen for special education as we move forward with our migration to Aspen. So we were using a platform called ESPED, and Karen intentionally structured the transition to Aspen to fall a year later so that we could get all of the different records carried over and that teachers would have a baseline comfort level with using Aspen. And then at the building levels, I just wanted to delineate the different strands or the focus that we have this year. So these things will appear in some format during the first three days, but then additionally, they're scaffolded throughout the year in terms of the, the half-days that we have. So at the middle high school, the major strands of professional growth this year are Carver Pathways, and I know that we've presented consistently on that, but continuing that work. And then NEASC accreditation, so our decennial accreditation was moved back because of COVID, and NEASC has a new set of standards that they adopted in 2020 and a new format. So in preparation for this spring's collaborative conference visit, we will be taking on the self-assessment, which is a whole component and, and time-intensive experience. We also are going to continue to support the first cohort of project-based learning teachers. There were 15 teachers plus six teachers and administrators in the leadership team that attended a three-day training back in June, and each of those teachers will be implementing two project-based units this year and looking to support those folks with that. And then social emotional learning will continue to coordinate efforts to support the whole child, including the, the castle requirements around social emotional learning or the castle strands, and really looking at making sure that we're addressing any social emotional learning needs that are born out of this last year. And then lastly, some tailored professional development and collaborative work. Last year, the middle high school took on having a group look at advanced placement performance, and that will continue as well as some specialized training from the New England League of Middle Schools as they're working to adopt the new research on developmentally appropriate practice for early adolescents. At the elementary school, you'll see a similar structure where we have some strands that we'll be focusing on throughout the year. The first one is recovery from COVID loss, and this will obviously be a focal point throughout the district and will stretch vertically from preschool through graduation. But at the elementary school, we're looking at how to address gaps while the gap is narrow, so we know that every year that students continue on the gap could potentially widen, so we're looking at social, emotional, and academic gaps generated through COVID and how to address those in the classroom and through various supports. The elementary school has also planned for some school-wide training on universal design for learning, which we have started several years ago, but we want to continue to apply those strategies that remove barriers for students in three different distinct areas, because this will be the first, hopefully, full year that we are implementing bridges in grades three through five. We are going to continue to support professional development through the Math Learning Center and through our math coach. And then, again, social emotional learning is a key strand. And lastly, we met this summer as a literacy curriculum council, and we're doing a year-long study, including a pilot of potential literacy programs. The program that we currently use is on life support and is no longer being published, and so we're looking at opportunities to research what the strongest possibilities are to support our readers and writers and our intervention in UDL. And my last slide is just, do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Meredith?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Meredith.
You're welcome, I know how to clear the room.
Yeah, so we're, we're excited about the professional development opportunities that will be coming up in the first three days of school and then throughout the school year, and having them be coordinated and, and carried out over time. So Meredith, thank you for that overview.
Sounds great, yeah, thank you for that overview for all of us to...
Meredith, if you want, I can make a motion that next time there's a big, hot topic, we'll have you go first.
I think, actually, I think Christine felt that way.
Christine's all right.
So please, we'd like to welcome Christine Cabral, who's going to review our proposed handbook changes for the middle school handbook. So we're glad to have Christine here with us, who will take us through the changes.
Yes, welcome.
Probably fairly briefly.
Hey, everyone, thank you. Yeah, Meredith, I'm quite relieved that you presented before me. There's nothing too riveting here. You've had a copy of our handbook changes, but I'll just try to review them as briefly as possible. Want to start by thanking Karen Booth and Maria Calvo, who worked with me this spring, met with me several times to review the handbook and went through it quite thoroughly to find anything that needed to be changed. Just general updates throughout the handbook. We will, of course, update the school year to read 2021, 2022. We'll update all of the directory and personnel and staffing, update the school calendar, table of contents, review that and make sure that's accurately relaying page numbers. And also just want to make, let everyone know, we are going to maintain the COVID website. So on the front page of our handbook cover, there's a link. We found that very effective last year as a tool to, so while we'll review the handbook, the most accurate, up-to-date information regarding any changes in management of the building, the COVID website was, got a lot of positive feedback about that last year, and we'll continue that this year. So going on for page, just page two, where it reads that Karen Teigert was the Title IX Coordinator, we'll adjust that to read Scott Neef. And Scott had been identified as the Title I Coordinator for the district, and that will now be Meredith Erickson, so that adjustment will be made in their contact information. On page eight, there's a statement regarding Chromebooks, that they're provided for all students and that they're an excellent resource for students, for Google Classroom and teacher websites and agendas, but Meredith had asked that the elementary, middle, and high school handbook add the additional statement regarding handbooks for parents and families. So that statement reads, Chromebooks are issued for use at school and home. While we utilize filtering software that meets online child safety guidelines, families assume responsibility to manage their child's technology uses at home. Our website includes online resources with tips and suggestions for families on technology use at home, and then there's a link to our school website, which gives parents safety tips regarding social media and suggestions for apps that they can use to monitor their child's use. On page 12, we currently have the bell schedule that was utilized by students in grades six, seven, and eight, but we need to label that and identify that that's the grade six and seven bell schedule. We haven't really finished tweaking the eighth grade schedule. Last year, eighth graders followed the same schedule as students in grades nine through 12, so they're going to continue to do that this year when we iron out the details of what their lunch is and what their, the one-hour delay, two-hour delay, early release schedule. So we just need to add the eighth grade bell schedule in there, because that'll be a difference. And then going on on pages 15 through 16, Karen Teigert was identified as the coordinator for the following items, the American with Disabilities Act, the Equal Educational Opportunities Act, transition planning in homeless education assistance, all of those need to be changed to identify Ms. Melissa Leary, our new Director of Special Education, as a coordinator for those positions. And then on page 16, again, that identifies Karen Teigert as the coordinator of Title IX, and we need to change, make that change to read Scott Neef. On page 17, this isn't a change, this was just something that was missing. I compared our middle school handbook, just the district policies, to the elementary and the high school, and just this little statement was missing in the middle school handbook. I'm not sure why that was. But regarding the public schools grievance procedures, this just, this statement just needs to be added. The respondent and his/her associates are prohibited from retaliating in any manner against a complaint or a party involved in the complaint procedure. Acts of retaliation will result in immediate disciplinary action, including but not limited to a suspension, expulsion, or dismissal. So that was just missing from the district policy. On page 19, we had information regarding Jupiter Grades as our online grading system, and that needs to be removed. Last year, we adopted the Aspen as our online student information system, so we'll remove Jupiter Grades and then just wrote a brief statement regarding Aspen, which reads that Aspen is an online student information system which allows parents, guardians to access their students' grades on a regular basis. The Aspen system also provides access to student demographic data, attendance, assignments, and schedules. Teachers have been asked to upgrade grade books bi-weekly. Student information is confidential and can only be retrieved by a parent or guardian and authorized school personnel. For more information regarding Aspen and how to set up an account, visit the Aspen Family Portal Overview, and I attached the link there, which will bring them to how to set up accounts and provide parents more information about Aspen. On page 53, just a slight change to our dismissal policy. Again, this is something that we used last year, we implemented last year. It's the same system that's used at the elementary school, using Pickup Patrol. So just really, the dismissal policy reads very similar to what it was prior, but added a link to Pickup Patrol where parents can use that to dismiss their students. On page 66, again, we're changing our backpack policy. We used to, two years ago, we didn't allow students in grades six, seven, or eight to use, carry their backpacks with them, and we made the change a couple of years back to allow eighth graders to carry them with them. But due to COVID last year and not having lockers, all students carried their backpacks with them, and teacher feedback is it was greatly successful, the students were organized, Chromebooks were more protected, there were less Chromebook issues. So we've decided that we, the teachers really feel strongly that they want the students to be able to have their backpacks with them if they want to. And again, I, we, on the COVID website, we'll update locker usage. My understanding is right now we're not going to use lockers to start the year, but of course, if we go back to the lockers, kids will be able to keep their things in their lockers. And then just a quick change in the cafeteria, we're going to remove the premium options because free lunch will be available to all students again this year. They'll have several options to choose from, but there's no longer a premium option, and we just needed to remove the NutriKids system because we don't use that any longer, it's needs to be changed to MySchool Bucks. And I believe that's it for our handbook changes, if there's any questions.
What was that last one, Scott, that you just did? There was something on lockers at the end.
Page 69?
Page 69.
The last piece was on backpacks.
Oh, the backpack policy?
It's page 69, locker.
Oh, okay, so that's going with the...
It's related back to the...
So just related back, so I had said that they can carry them or put them in their lockers, but just making it clear that our intention at the beginning of the school year is not to use the lockers and, but when we put them back in place, the kids can put them there or choose to carry them with them.
It's not directly related, but is it appropriate for me to ask why we wouldn't use lockers if they'd be in here? If all health and safety restrictions are being lifted?
Yeah, but I think we're, our next meeting, we're going to talk about some of the health and safety requirements that we're going to put in place. Because, so, for example, we talked about doing the one-way hallways. So I think there is a discussion, I don't know if we've made 100% of final decision on whether we're going to say students can't use their lockers, because students using their lockers leads them to congregate. And so the goal is to move quickly between classes, have less contact in the hallways. So even though we're, there are certain policies, even though the state has technically lifted all health and safety requirements, there are certain policies that we're going to put in place to minimize contact in the beginning of the year. Lockers have...
I was just thinking, the backpacks get very heavy if you have all their stuff in them, and so not being able to...
Locker use has diminished greatly in the last couple of years.
Mm-hmm. Interesting, okay.
So now, again, not, my, I'm talking about my own kids, they're in high school, they've never been to their lockers. They don't know where they are, they get a number, and they've never, never even looked at it. Any of my three kids in high school.
Okay.
Where do you put the picture of the boy you like?
My kids all, as you all know, my kids go, my kids go to Todd High, which is a huge school. That might be another reason they've never seen their lockers, but they literally, they just don't use them. So it's just been a cultural shift a little bit, actually, there's just kids are using their lockers less. But we are, we are talking about as a COVID strategy right now to reduce, to reduce congregating.
I apologize for the tangent, I was just kidding.
Okay, so... Yes, we need a motion to approve.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the changes as presented.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Nope, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cabral.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, so our next agenda item is a second reading of Policy FA.
Can I, can we take like a three-minute recess?
Absolutely. Do you want, is three minutes really what you want? Five minutes? Okay, so we can, can we take a five-minute, we'll take a five-minute recess.
I think we need to, sort of, make a motion to go into...
Okay, so can someone make a motion? Would someone like to make a motion to take a five-minute recess?
May I make a motion of us to take a brief five-minute recess?
And to return.
And then to return to open session.
Return to open session.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think you heard that, but the committee has voted to take a five-minute recess, so we'll be back in five minutes.
So, 9:32 PM, Carver School Committee Meeting is back in open session.
Okay, so we left off of looking at the second reading of Policy FA, Policy for Facilities Development and Management Goals. We did the first reading of this policy at our last meeting. The policy some committee had met in May, reviewed possible revisions to the district policy, and it's really about adding this sentence. In pursuit of this goal, the members of the school committee shall tour all school facilities and property once prior to the start of school or once before February 1st. So it's bringing back to the committee tonight for a second reading for that change and any action the committee would like to take on our Policy FA for Facilities Development and Management Goals.
He just got kicked out, is he?
Yeah. I just dropped that.
He said something about unstable.
I'm trying to remember if it was a conversation or an actual change, weren't, I believe it was Jason was concerned about the...
Well, Jeff, we can just hold, because a few people got, I was there, I think everybody's back in, is everybody back in? Stephanie, you back in?
I, it is loading.
Okay.
I cannot see your screen. Are you still sharing?
I just stopped the show.
Okay, you just stopped the share, okay.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was in and still co-host.
I just have a gray screen.
Okay.
Okay. So hopefully, we didn't drop people at home. Hopefully, people at home can still hear.
How many participants you have? Twenty-nine still.
Twenty-nine. There was like forty-four before we went on our break.
I, I think that that number's been pretty consistent for the past five minutes.
I just got kicked, I just got kicked out again.
You dropped again?
Yep.
Jen, there was a discussion Jason brought up. Were you making a change to it?
I couldn't remember if we changed, if we, if there was a proposed wording change or not, or if it was just a discussion, but it was ultimately left.
I think it was a discussion that was left the same, but ultimately, someone could remake that amendment again.
I just, I.
If you want to rehash that, I think the discussion was around the concept of
Requiring.
whether it had to be required or was just recommended that the school committee do it twice a year.
Right, right. Okay.
But he didn't feel strongly about it one way or the other, if I recall. It was just his opinion.
Right.
So for those who may, I, I'm still not able to connect.
Yeah, hold on.
So I apologize.
I don't have your screen anymore, Scott.
Technical difficulties I'm having for some reason.
That usually happens to me.
Area fifty-eight's back up.
I'm in, I'm.
The only person I don't see is Stephanie. It looks like everybody else is in the meeting.
Oh, is it spinning on you? Oh, yeah, it's just spinning on.
Yep.
Do you have Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi signal?
Yep.
Still has your connector ready? Didn't drop you?
Nope. So let's see if I close that. If I try to join in.
I could tilt my camera. Do you want?
Can you see? I can also see if I can join from my iPad, I suppose.
Oh, yeah, I could, I could.
Both tilt our cameras.
I guess the, I'm going to open up the chat for a second. I'm just going to ask people in the audience if they can hear all of us. Because as long as they can hear all of us, Stephanie, you don't necessarily need to see.
They don't need, they don't need to see me. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure people don't want to see me.
So, hold on a second.
Oh, no, no, no. No, I don't need, there's no response required.
So I just opened up the chat again. Can everybody let us know if they could actually hear all the members of the school committee? So Stephanie, if you say something, can, are you heard at home?
This is Stephanie. Can anyone at home on Zoom hear me? I'm having technical difficulties.
Yeah, they, everyone can hear you.
Excellent. Great.
The sounds there, you can't see the presentation, but everyone can hear you. So I think, I think we can proceed then.
Absolutely. Proceed by all means. It's not too late.
It's now interactive meeting.
Okay, so we're on the, the proposal. I don't know if one's all like to make a motion.
Can we share it, Scott, again, so we?
I can put it, yeah, put it back up again. Give me a second. There it is. So obviously, our, our discussion last time was the, we talked, we talked about the word shall. You know, shall tour or is recommended or some softer language saying that what if someone misses it? You know, shall is a very prescriptive term. And so I think that was the discussion we had last time. And so certainly, someone can make a motion to strike the word shall and put a different word in there. With, with the overall goal of saying, look, the school committee should be out in the buildings checking, checking out facilities on a regular basis as we, you know, do planning for capital improvements, as we do planning for budget, as we look at spaces. That, I think that was the intent of the policy Subcommittee.
Right. It was, it was.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it wasn't more, it was more just to get people, even future school committees into the buildings. So we were out as, you know, stakeholders.
Right.
But shall, shall is a commitment.
Shall is a commitment.
So I just want, for a point of clarification, so administration is also okay with this and making the commitment? Like, we may not be able to coordinate like one visit with all of us, so that'll be flexible as far as schedules and things?
I'd love to meet with you and tour the buildings. Individually.
One-on-one.
One of the things we, I mean, I don't think this is talking out of school. We talked about a Saturday meeting, maybe, and have everyone if they could make it Saturday.
We, we did this for the building tours. So when we were building the new school, we would post the meeting, and it would just say that the intent of the meeting was to tour the building.
Yep.
And not to meet in like open session afterwards.
Right.
So we'd reconvene and we'd go tour the building.
I, I can make a amendment to the proposed motion?
Surely can.
Okay.
Certainly can.
You're certainly welcome to?
I don't think anyone's made a motion.
Motion, right.
Oh, there is no. Nope, there is, there is no motion.
Okay. I move to approve the change Policy FA, Policy for Facilities Development and Management Goals by adding the sentence, "In pursuit of this goal, the members of the school committee shall make a conscious effort to tour all school facilities and property once prior to the start of school and once before February one."
I like that.
So we're adding, make a conscious effort.
Instead of shall.
Well, shall.
Or shall make, add the sentence.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second, though.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I think that's a, two compromise.
Okay.
I think Jason will really like that, actually.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Then if no one shows up, we'll send you back to shall, doesn't it?
I just think it's beneficial for everyone to, whether or not you have a student in the building, to tour it before we make any financial decisions. So.
Agree.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
I actually really enjoy going to see the schools. I'm weird.
So, all right. Next, we have budget transfers.
All right, so Ron's going to do budget transfers to close out FY twenty-one.
I've got a two-page memo. Your first page is just your warrant signatures. It's August, so you have a split set of warrant signatures closing out FY twenty-one, which closed out into June, and then your first set of warrants beginning us on July first. I won't go through them all with you right now, but I would ask before you leave today that you sign the warrants here in the binder, please.
Absolutely.
The next portion of your memo is the FY twenty-one budget closeout. So a couple of big items to share with you, and then of course, if you want to drill down into anything in particular, I have the full FY twenty-one budget, all the transfers down to the penny. We can talk about any of the lines, of course. Big picture, FY twenty-one saw a combination of increased sort of one-time state and federal money, as well as just a temporary reduction in costs due to COVID-19 yielded an anticipated balance for the fiscal year for FY twenty-one. So as part of our closeout, the district took really a conservative, balanced approach to utilizing anticipated savings. We thought about it in three parts. The first is using some of those resources to support students, additional investments in educational supplies, equipment, infrastructure, technology, those sorts of things. And you see that outlined in your FY twenty-one warrants, particularly the ones in May and June. The second, supporting our staff, paying stipends to honor the incredible work they did to help our school district continue through, through the pandemic. And finally, supporting the taxpayers by managing a turnback of funds to the town of Carver. All said and done, at the end of FY twenty-one, we'll turn back three hundred ninety, three ninety, fifty to the town of Carver. And again, we really needed an effort to purchase the right materials, that we need to use that resource for our kiddos, honor our staff, of course, to make sure that they, they were honored for the work that they did, but not to rush and purchase things just for the sake of it, right? That this is ultimately taxpayer money, and we want to make sure that we give it back to taxpayers if we do have a balance. And, and so that's why you see that through the three-pronged approach. If I can change gears and just share with you a sales sheet, if you don't mind. Your first tab is again, just FY twenty-one. It's your final closeout and transfers. I won't go through every single line. You've got two hundred and forty-five account lines, but you see all of them broken down. Total budget, expended, your final balance. But if you take a look at the second tab, which is JE for journal entries, I'll share with you a couple of highlights and then certainly open up for any questions that you may have for me. Couple of key highlights. Row two and row four are both out-of-district prepay. Statute allows the school district, the school committee, to be able to prepay some of our out-of-district collaborative tuitions. And so with some of that balance, we took advantage of being able to prepay and get out ahead. If you recall back in February, when we finalized our budget for FY twenty-two, part of our strategy to close the budget gap in FY twenty-two was to utilize some prepays, and we did just that. You also see some of the investments that the school district made, things like investing in remote learning, video equipment. You see the sunshade over at the elementary school. If you've driven by the middle high school recently, you saw they're doing some concrete work out front. That's a, you know, set of concrete area that's been cracking over time, and so we had some resources available and did projects like that, as well as some support for students with special education needs you see on line eight. You can go down the list and certainly see all of them, but those are some of your biggest expenditures, and I'll certainly open up to any questions that you may have. I would request that the committee ultimately, after our discussion, vote on the transfers for closing out FY twenty-one.
Okay. With that, does anyone have any questions about the transfers for Ron?
No.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the budget transfers.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I thank you for that. The last thing I'll share with you is at the second page of your finance memo. I'd like to just give you a quick flavor of what's going on in educational finance at the state and federal level as well. I won't go through it for more than just a minute. I know we're a little bit over time today. Item one, state passed the FY twenty-two budget. A little late, but not as bad as last year. So we have a state budget, which is wonderful. I've included a couple of different summaries if you want to get a high-level view of what is included in the state budget from an educational perspective here in Massachusetts. Also, at the state level, you can see that the legislature voted pretty overwhelmingly to place that fair share amendment on the November twenty-two ballot. That's something that the legislature's been working on for several years now, but finally does have on the ballot ten seconds on that to measure that would add a surtax on incomes of over a million dollars. Mass Budget, which is a pretty reputable analysis group of state and legislative budgets, estimates that you look at about $2 billion statewide that would be generated from the fair share amendment. There, the legislature's commitment has been to focus a lot of that energy, that resource, on the Student Opportunity Act, which I'm sure you've heard a lot about over the past couple of years. And lastly, because I'm sort of a finance nerd, Massachusetts did a really nice job, put out a summary of how their COVID funds are being distributed across the Commonwealth. It's a lot of infographics, but if you have thirty seconds and you're really interested, it's a cool way to see sort of the COVID funding from the feds to the state to the municipal levels and how it's been playing out in the Commonwealth. And I'll end at that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Okay, so, reports from the school committee. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Please, for.
Anyone?
Did we motion and vote for the, we already motion and voted for the budget transfer?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's been a long.
You can do it again. You can do it again if you.
So I guess my takeaway from all this is that we all just remember to act as humans and respect each other, our neighbors, our teachers, our fellow parents. You know, we have to remember why we live in such a small community and the benefits of living in a small community. And we know everybody, but we also need to respect everybody. And I'm glad, you know, things didn't get too, too crazy tonight. And I think, in spite of everything going on, we have to remember the goal was to get the children back in full time. Really want to keep a pulse on what's happening in terms of COVID numbers and the health of our teachers and students. So again, I, I just, like I said, we need to just really, you know, treat each other with respect and, you know, honor thy neighbors and fellow community members. So.
Thank you. Jen?
I'll tag onto that and just say thank you, Colleen. That's very well said. I am so thankful for everybody in the community who reached out and whether it was, you know, a personal contact or an email or showing up to the meeting tonight. You know, I, I really do value the input from everybody. You know, I, I do feel bad for those who felt really strongly for a mask mandate because they felt it was needed to protect their children. And I would hope that you will be able to find something that suits your family. But I, I did, I do believe we did what was right by the community as a whole, and I do hope that, you know, as a community, you know, we will take that strong encouragement and under advisement. We will support one another, but we will remain kind above all. You know, we're open to revisiting things if our community's situation changes. But right now, we are low numbers, so let's continue to stay safe, Carver, and enjoy the last couple of weeks of summer. A lot of neighboring districts are going back before Labor Day, and I'm thankful that we're not. So feels like a little bit of extra time. So make the most of those last few weeks, soak up some sun, and everyone get energized and ready for new school year.
Thank you. Andy?
Okay. I want to thank everybody that contacted us and reached out to us on either side of the mask issue and the reopening issue and COVID issue. As usual, I appreciate everything, all of your words. I want to get something into the record, and I want to read something for the general audience. Scott, could you pull up that screenshot I sent you, please? This is an email response. I think you guys all have this in Drive already. This is one of the reasons I vote the way I vote on masks and feel the way I feel about them. And I just wanted to, like I said, get this into the record. So I want to see if Scott can pull it up on the screen.
Give me a second.
Yeah. So people can see it at home.
Hi. I have what you said.
Okay. So I'm just going to read this to you real quick. This was an email response from Dr. Anthony Fauci, Director of the NIH, where, who, the CDC and most of America and many countries in the world get their COVID advice from on health. This was Wednesday, February twenty twenty, in response to a colleague of his or a friend of his, Sylvia Burwell, who I believe is the President of American College. Don't quote me on that. She was asking about the effectiveness of masks. She said, Sylvia, masks are really for infected people to prevent them from spreading infection to people who are not infected, rather than protecting uninfected people from acquiring infection. The type of mask you buy at the drugstore is not really effective in keeping out virus, which is small enough to pass through the material. It might, however, provide some slight benefit to keep out gross droplets if someone coughs or sneezes on you. I do not recommend that you wear a mask, particularly since you are going to a very low-risk location. Your instincts are correct. Money is best spent on medical countermeasures such as diagnostics and vaccine. Safe travels. Best regards, Tony. So this is the guy we're actually getting most of our advice from, and he's flip-flopped on this many different times. But that's a personal email to one of his friends. All right? So that's, I'll take his word on that. And, and it really is, I vote yes on this because the cloth masks and the surgical masks and things that we have available to us, you know, we don't have respirators and most people don't have N95 masks. You still can't find them. Those cloth masks and surgical masks do not stop the virus particles from coming into your face. All right? So they're really ineffective. So that's, I just wanted to get that out there on the record on why I voted the way I did on that. So thank you very much, and I wish everyone a happy next, well, the rest of your August. Thank you.
Okay, so I would also like to thank everyone from the community that reached out to members of the school committee, as well as the school district, to express their opinions and their concerns over the upcoming school year in regards to all that is COVID and all that is unfortunately having to begin navigating another school year in a very tumultuous time. I appreciate everyone voicing their opinions and their concerns. I respect everyone's opinion and their right to do so. I just ask that everyone please continue to remain respectful and to please be mindful of how your words may affect other people, because I think it's important that we respect one another, whether we agree or disagree. And with that being said, we don't know what will happen when school starts. So I'm sure we will be having a meeting in a few weeks.
We, we actually didn't, we didn't actually set a date for.
So.
I was going to bring it up after Stephanie was done.
Okay. So again, just like last year, we're all looking at this as it being a fluid situation. So, you know, as things arise, as things may change across the district, of course, the school committee will be well-informed, as will the public. And if anything needs to be taken under advisement at a future time, it will, and it will be very well communicated to the community. So I encourage people to continue to reach out if you have any questions. And I appreciate everyone that took the time to come and to also dial in on Zoom. So thank you, everyone, for attending. Should we discuss this before we adjourn? So, okay, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, given that we left.
It would make sense.
Close contacts wide open, might make sense to meet.
Those two weeks from today?
August thirtieth.
That's a week prior to school opening. You know, anything, any decisions we made on close contacts or, or other health and safety protocols, we would be able to.
Implement.
You know, notify the community. You know, give us a week to notify people prior to the start of school.
Yep. And then a week to implement. Hopefully, there will not be a need for that, but just in case, is everyone okay with August thirtieth? We'll communicate that to, to Jason.
Do we need to take a vote on that, or can we just?
No, we can just send him.
Just add it, right?
Yep.
Okay, so.
On the thirtieth of.
August seven PM.
Yep.
Same place, same Zoom.
Same time.
Yep.
Okay, so with that, unless anyone else has anything to say, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive.